Lynn, do I have to start all over?
Just take the role one more time. I apologize. That was my fault.
I already interrupted.
Okay, well now that was a very good point, John. Thank you for that. Okay, John Goodwin, I am here. John Chris.
Present.
Krista Nielsen.
Here.
Dan Radman.
Here.
Claire Tascornia.
Here.
Kent Turner.
Here.
Dick Ward.
Here.
Bill Williams is not here. Arthur Cassavant.
Here.
James Bash.
Here.
And Chris Herring is not here yet. So, Mr. Bash, you are seated for Mr. Williams for the duration of our deliberations, okay?
Yep.
So, as everyone knows, we will be discussing three applications related to the New Canaan Library. Discussion consideration request to Edward Hamlin Robinson and Cole Authorized Agent New Canaan Library owners along with its affiliates. A property is located at 151 Main Street, 64 Maple, 4448 56 South to amend the zoning regulations dated June 16, 2007. Revised August 16, 2019 to add section 5.10 quasi-public library overlay zone and proposed amendments to section 22 of the New Canaan zoning regulations. Upon application, Edward Hamlin Rob, so that's the overlay zone. Upon application of Edward Hamlin Robinson and Cole Authorized Agent for the New Canaan Library owners along with its affiliates. A property is located at 151 Main, 64 Maple, 4448 56 South. For site plan approval pursuant to 8.2A, a new section 510G7. Of proposed quasi-public library overlay zone and a special permit pursuant to 82B, 44D, 354C, 464G, 66D. And proposed sections 510CD, 510G3B, 510G7. And eight of the proposed quasi-public overlay zone regulations, so that's a special permit, the site plan application. And then the third item is discussion and consideration, the request of Edward Hamlin Robinson Cole Authorized Agent for the New Canaan Library owners along with its affiliates. A property is located at 151 Main Street, 64 Maple, 4448 56 South. For petition for change in zoning boundary for properties currently in the business A and apartment zone. And so that is the map change. So as everyone knows, you know, we have decisions on the overlay zone. And I'm sure you've all read our decision criteria. But key aspects of the decision criteria on the overlay zone is the plan of conservation and development. With the key item being in the decision criteria taken into consideration, the P O C D. It's also protecting public health, safety, welfare and property values. And it's attaining the purposes of the regulations, which as you know, is laid out in the first page of the planning and zoning regulations. Changing the zoning boundary is largely similar, same considerations with the key addition being, is it suitable for the intended location? And then the special permit criteria and the site plan criteria, you are all familiar with. Key items being there, suitable location for use, appropriate improvements. Suitable transportation conditions, adequate public utilities and services. And the plan of conservation and development. So as we've done in the past. What I was thinking as we've done with some of our more difficult applications. And my perspective is, quite frankly, this is one of the most difficult ones I've faced in terms of thinking about decision considerations. And as I mentioned, we have Pete Gelderman here with us tonight. And so Pete's here to answer any legal or even, you know, more strategic decisions, how to craft the decision. Pete's got a very good experience base there. And as we know, you know, one of the key issues here is clearly the 1913 library. So, you know, I thought we can do is start with a general discussion. You know, one idea is to see if we can get a general sense of the commission. Perhaps think strategically where the commission wants to go. See if we can, through discussion, come up with the outline of an approval or denial. Or conversely, I think if we find that, you know, certain members of the commission are, you know, for one ask, you know, one. In favor of doing one thing versus the other thing, then as we've done before, we can also lay out potentially two different decisions. And, you know, then have the planner work on that and revisit. So I open it up to everybody. Thoughts? John?
Chairman. Yeah. For the record, it's John Chris. Over 700 documents been submitted for this application regarding this application. Many hours of deliberation, often late nights, just immense public input, which I find very encouraging to see this level of engagement in the community. I know many people feel quite strongly on this application, one way or the other. I think all sides have made some very useful points. And, you know, when I think about this application, really every application. It's what's best for the long-term health and welfare of the town of New Canaan and the larger community in which we live. So that's the key general concept on my mind within the rules we operate under and the laws we operate under. That said, after considering all this information, I am leaning strongly towards approving the various applications that the library has made. Why is this? I think the town needs a better library. And that a good library is a key, keystone of any town, particularly one as active as the town of New Canaan. And speaks very directly to property values, health, welfare and safety. Given the various programs that the library has and we'd be able to have in more abundance with a different physical plant. Vital community resource, particularly for the elderly who are looking for ways to continue to engage in the community. Ongoing education and socialization, as well as people of more modest means who rely on public facilities for entertainment and education. I was particularly struck by the video the students in New Canaan put together, talking about why they view the library as a plus. We often don't hear from them. I can't remember hearing from them before on an application. I may be wrong, but not too often. So I was very encouraged by that. They would take such a step, says something regarding how strongly they feel about this. The larger newly designed library will have capacity to do a lot of things that the current library cannot do. And I think it's a beautifully designed building and I think it will become a landmark in time. Regarding the overlay zone, I would support that with a few minor amendments I can discuss later on. But it's, it makes a strong definitive statement regarding the value this commission and the town have for the library. And see if it can operate in a proper manner. And also with unique properties like a healthcare facility, a hospital, a library and so forth. They have particularities that often need. An overlay zone such as this to help deal with those, those issues. So I would be sympathetic to that. Regarding the old library, it's a very nice old building. It seems to be in good physical condition, the walls and structurally sound. And it's really been a core part of the town for over 100 years, many happy memories there from many people. And I have a lot of sympathy for that. Keeping it becomes problematic. The applicant states quite clearly it has no use for the building. I'll take them at their word. Also, the elimination of the building being replaced by town green, I would see as a significant civic asset. And so I want to consider that too. I think a lot of, when I see applications, there's almost never all pluses or all minuses. It's how do you balance the various pluses and minuses? And certainly would be unfortunate to lose the building, the old library. But I think there's a lot to be gained too, and it's this balance that I'm considering. Also keeping it is a bit problematic on, you know, is, does it, is it an empty building that the, that the library owns and it says it has no use for? If it gets rented out, where do you have parking and so forth? One of the, one of the submissions to this committee, commission was. You know, talking about creating easements for parking and access to it and so forth. And it just becomes very problematic to have a building of some sort that's needed in parking, ingress, egress and all the rest. And again, it's, it's the library's building. So that's my broad view. I see the library and the zone as being very supportive of health and welfare for this town and property values. And I look forward to hearing the views of my fellow commissioners. I'm sure that will sharpen my own views. And I think lead us all to a, to a good conclusion for the, for the betterment of our town. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, John. Couple of, I mean, very well laid out and a couple of technical comments which John referred to is. You know, once we have this more general discussion, you know, I think it will be worthwhile to walk through the overlay zone. And if, as John says, there's minor modifications, as all of you know, I have a, what I think is a minor modification. And the good news is the applicant already agreed to it. And then we also have the ability to condition the special permit as well. And of course, as you know, we need to approve the overlay zone and the map change in order to move on to the special permit. Just thinking about, you know, how everything unfolds from a technical perspective. So anybody, anybody else?
If I may?
Sure, Dan.
So I've been torn. Having seen the evolution of the library project over the last, it's probably the better part of 12 to 14 years from the days of Jeb Walker. Seeing the various iterations and proposals and design schemes that have come before us, just as draft proposals. This is the first formal one. I think it's a great building. I think it's a handsome compliment to the town. It is reflecting the mid-century modern vernacular that is a staple here in this town. And is, and has made it world famous because of it. And, and I think the size of the building and the proposed zoning modifications are all fair and. Reasonable requests for the building. On the flip side, the existing library, the 1913 library. I think that is a building worth saving. I think the, what disappoints me most is the missed opportunity here. I do hear what the library team has said about them, quote unquote, looking at this issue and programming 12 different schemes, et cetera. But I find it hard to believe that a solution could not become a con, come up with to incorporate the old library. I've been in libraries that do incorporate the historic structure. The Morgan Library in New York City on Madison Avenue, everyone's pretty familiar with it, the Ridgefield Library right up the road. And there's dozens, if not hundreds of other examples of such. Complementary solutions where the, the historic component of the library is maintained. Given a program within the new library structure and new library built around it. I think in this case, the currently proposed solution, from everything I've seen and everything I've heard. Everything we've seen with the deletion of the parking structure, the escalating budget. I think it's a solution of convenience and of cost. It is the simplest programmatically and sequence wise in terms of construction. It is the least expensive because you can keep the existing structure operational while the new structure is being built. And then abandon and demo the old. I get it. I completely understand. But I think it does a disservice to the town to abandon the old library and not incorporate it into the new design. I think that's where Centerbrook, specifically Centerbrook, as the architects who have done that type of solution incorporating the historic structure. On a number of their projects, which are for all to see on their website. Had a great opportunity here. Obviously they were given different direction on how to proceed and I get that too. Again, I, it's, I think it's a missed opportunity. I think it could have worked. I don't subscribe nor agree to the response that we looked at it and we couldn't make it work. As an architect, you make it work. That is your job. When you're given direction by your client, you find a solution. Obviously the direction was different. I am in favor of a new library. John mentioned the 700 letters. I mean, there's, I have not, I don't think anyone on this board has read every single one of them. But I have gone through the majority of them as they come in. I'd say it's probably about a 50 50 split between the people who are in support of the new library, as is with the green. Those words are always included. And there's another large minority or majority there in support of keeping the old building. So as far as the town is concerned, as far as the town's opinions are concerned, I'd say it's a split, pretty even split. So I can't speak for the rest of the board, but I do not think this is the right solution for the town. That's my opinion.
Dick?
And if I may just add one other thing.
Sorry, Dan.
Of, of all the letters that came in, in support of the currently proposed library, as is with the green. As those words were always included. The people that are. Supporting the, the library project as proposed. Are all well-intentioned and have the right reasons. And I don't think there's anyone in this town that disagrees that we need a new library. And need something that will serve us for the next millennia. But I think there's, there's. A, a lack of appreciation for the history in this town. Of the historical structures in this town. And I think this commission would be very ill-served to agree to the removal and demolition of a historic building. Which is a bannerhead image in our P O C D. It would set the wrong precedent. It would open the door for other buildings in town that are the fabric and the vocabulary of our town to be demolished and removed in the future. If you can do it once, you can do it again. That's all I have.
So Dan, just a quick question before I move on to Dick. So would you envision a condition or is it a no vote or how are you thinking about things?
For me, it's a no vote as currently designed and submitted.
Okay, Dick?
Yeah, Dick Ward. I agree with a lot of the underlying comments from both John and Dan commissioners. And I think that the library, the proposed new library building, there's very little objection to that. That's, that is, that is not the issue. The issue has perhaps unfortunately become. The 1913 old library versus. A green, a grassy space. And as Dan mentioned, I think it, the town seems to be split pretty much down the middle. Now. As I understand the numbers and anyone can correct me if I have them wrong. The existing library in, in Toto is about 3,500 square feet. Thirty, 35,000 square feet. The 1913 portion, which people who want to save it are talking about. Seems to, they seem to have agreed that that's about 3,600 square feet. About 10%. Of the existing total library. 3,600. It's not very big. I mean, that's 60 feet by 60 feet is 3,600. And to. Trade that for a plot of grass of 3,600 feet. I don't know. It, I think it raises some serious concerns. I don't disagree that having a green space. In town is desirable. I also can't ignore the fact that that green space is on one of the busiest corners in town. Cherry and Main at that stoplight. Is a busy intersection. So that the, the green is going to be very close to a fairly high traffic area. In fact, when we had our site visit as the commission. At one point, we were standing on the sidewalk on Cherry Street, very close to that corner. And I forget who was talking, but while they were talking, two 18-wheeler. Trailer trucks were stopped at that light, one behind the other. With their diesel engines rolling. I couldn't hear what the speaker was saying. So that, the green area, it's not a Wavine Park, it's not Irwin Park, which are terrific green areas. We have green areas. The other thing I'm a little disappointed in is that the library itself, as it was developing, the plans over the years. Seems to have been rather dismissive. Of Keith Simpson. And he has some good ideas and has had many good ideas for this town over the years. And I think perhaps he should have been listened to a little more closely at the time. So I'm sort of a bit ambivalent. And I guess what I would propose is. That we come up with a solution now that perhaps postpones the fate of the 1913 building. It's going to stay there until the new library is finished. We know that. That's part of the plan. So it seems to me we could structure it so that we say that when the new library is complete. Which is several years down the road. At that time, we can take another look at. Where we stand on the 1913 versus the green issue, which is the real issue. By that time, perhaps the preservation alliance. Will have come up with more concrete. Either financing so that the new library does not have to incur the cost of renovating the old library. Perhaps they'll come up with a plan on a usage. If the new library wants no part of the old library for use purposes, perhaps some nonprofit groups, which I understand. A few have already expressed some interest. But that may be clearer. And we may be in a better position to make a decision. With respect to the 1913 building. So that's, those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Dick. Anybody else?
This is Dan. Can I add one thing to follow up on Mr. Ward's comments? In terms of the keeping the old building as a separate entity, possible rent, rental or lease or possible use by someone else. I, I, I don't see that as a viable option. I, there were a number of letters that we received from business owners in town, landlords in town. All of whom expressed concern for what I mentioned during the last meeting, which is the 31 storefront vacancies that I counted, just taking a 10-minute drive around town. There's already a substantial amount of vacant available space. And we have landowners and landlords in town that are hurting and tenants that are hurting. And we would just be contributing to that, to that vacancy rate. I don't think we should do that. Like I said, I think this was a missed opportunity for the library, the 1913 library to be incorporated into the overall design of the new library. That's all.
James?
John, hey, John, it's Pete Gelderman. Can I, can I weigh in for a second here?
Absolutely, Pete, go ahead.
There are, there are people, probably members of the public who are using the Q and A. Feature to make comments and ask questions. That's not appropriate since the public hearings closed. I don't know if that can be disabled or not.
Well, Pete, we can't see it.
Oh, you cannot see that when a, when a question comes up?
Yes, we can. I can see it. Yeah, John, down at the bottom, Q and A, there's like a little red.
There's several.
Well, you only see it if you click on it, right?
Well, that's true, but it's available. And I don't know if there's a way to disable it or not.
Okay, Lynn, can we?
There isn't. I've tried to. There isn't. I've asked people if they could just refrain from using it because we can't have this discussion. And it would be helpful if you could refrain from it. I don't have the capabilities to shut it off.
Well, I can't see it. I don't think we need to be able to see it.
Right. I think commissioners just don't click on it.
Don't click on it.
Right. Pete, is that sufficient?
Yeah, it's, it's there as long as nobody looks at it.
Right. Okay.
James?
I, James Bash. Well, first off, let me say with, with humility that I wasn't even expecting to be able to speak tonight. So, and nor do I think that I'm likely to have a vote at the end of the day. So I at least wanted to get my initial thoughts in. Part of that humility comes from being a new member of this commission and recognizing that you all have much more experience than me. And deliberating all these issues and thinking through all these issues. So I reckon, I recognize that I'm coming from that vantage point. With that said, the way that I'm thinking about it. Is. Structurally, the first question that comes in my mind is the legal question, which is why I'm glad we have Mr. Gelderman here. That, you know, I and others can ask some questions regarding the concept of a taking. And if it is all equivocal that a conditionality on the preservation of the 1913 library would not constitute a taking. I would be in favor to, in regards to Mr. Ward's points, to come up with the type of condition that was originally. Or was in the MOU, I believe it was section 1.0, 1.08 before it was struck. Which I believe the language before it was struck said something along the lines of, after a two-year period. If the NCPA or 1913 Friends or that organization was able to come up with a viable financial and use plan for the 1913 library. Meaning in my mind that it would not be. A burden to taxpayers to fund the ongoing operations of that building, that it could be a self-sustaining entity on its own. That there would be no demolition of the 1913 library during that two-year period. And I thought that was a very reasonable approach. Another approach that could be taken is more of a milestone, a praise, milestone-based approach. That is a shorter-term timeframe than two, two years. But I would like to give the NCPA agency to raise that funding, to come up with a viable strategic financial and use plan. And have the town bodies approve of that. And then the big question in my mind is, well, why even go there? Why even be in favor of preservation versus lack of preservation? In that, in this instance. And when I have read over the P O C D and the stated main goal of the P O C D. Is an appropriate balance between conservation and development. And throughout the P O C D. Gives examples of character and place and things that people indelibly link to our town. And there are pictures of our, our library, the 1913 library. And the 1913 library seems to fit that, that context within the P O C D for historical preservation extremely well. extremely well. Um, because that is the stated main goal of the P O C D, it has more weight in my mind than the eleven of the other P O C D characteristics um that this new, this library application um does satisfy and satisfies significantly. Um, so very much in favor of the new library project. I'm also in favor, within that context, of preservation of the nineteen thirteen library. Um, under the kind of the, the outline that I just mentioned. There's a couple other components to it, as mentioned briefly. One is we talk about, you know, we, a lot of people have mentioned the village district guidelines, which cite whenever possible we should try to preserve or, or a new project should try to preserve historic or architecturally significant structures. Um, it's subjective and up and, and you know, I realize it's up for interpretation as to whether or not the nineteen thirteen library is historic or archi- or architecturally significant. In, in my mind, it is historic. Um, finally, I, I look at this as the library project overall as a partnership and always is a partnership between the town and um the library and the Board of Trustees and a whole bunch of stakeholders. And there's always been this um uh solid kind of give, you know, give and take between uh the, the library and, and the town. We fund around seventy percent of their operations. Um, I think under the Malozi administration, we wrote a four hundred seventy-five thousand dollar check that went to a one point four seven five million dollar acquisition of forty-eight South Avenue, which, which along with you know, the shift to off-site parking really enabled even the concept of the town green. If the town did not make those significant contributions in the past and will in the future, then um none of this would have been possible. So i- it was a little bit disappointing for me to hear what seemed like an ultimatum, you accept the application as is with the town, with, you know, the library construct in the green. Or we're gonna, you know, give back donations to our, our generous pledges, when I think in the context of a really solid partnership between the library, the town and different stakeholders over the years, which I hope will be maintained into the future. Um, last thing, my last point I wanted to make is, I recognize this should be a democratic process and we've had so many people weigh in, and I know the petitioners for the new library project in the green had something like fifteen hundred people support that idea. And is that more than the number of new Canaan residents that supported preservation? I believe that number is more. But I do not know how much that factor, which is an important one, should weigh into these deliberations, partially due to my lack of experience on the board. Thanks.
Anybody else? Ken?
You go ahead. I'll go after you, Ken.
Oh, sorry. Um, I think the um last three commissioners have done an excellent job of uh describing um the conditions, the um, you know, our environment, the uh uh what we have to um uh make a decision here and have stated it very well. Um, I find myself in a, a very difficult situation. Um, I was one of the authors of the um Village District Design Guidelines back in twenty-ten. And um I spent a great deal of time looking, researching and making sure that the historical aspect uh of, that was in the original guidelines was in fact uh increased uh so that our moderns would be protected. Our old buildings, the character, the historical character of New Canaan would be protected. Um, I spent a great deal of time crafting some language and photographing and uh making sure that uh that document reflected the historic aspect of New Canaan and the ability to uh keep it. Now, when you overlay that with the P O C D and again, I was, you know, part of uh the committee that uh helped uh bring that to a conclusion. Um, hi- the historical fabric, character of New Canaan is incredibly important to, to, I think all of the commissioners, but to the town. And when you take the two together and, you know, this tapestry of historic uh preservation. Um, I, I, I'm just don't know how I can uh turn my back on these two documents and uh approve uh the new library, the way it is, you know, currently structured. Um, I will say that I'm open to conditions to uh preserve the nineteen thirteen library. And um uh, you, you know, it's uh been a very difficult decision for me. I think the uh, the proposed library uh is, is well-designed. Um, but I don't think the uh purity of the site and the new library that is being proposed at the cost of uh destroying a, a very historic structure in our town is uh is, is valid. I don't, I don't think the applicant has made the case that, that a green is more important than the historic fabric of our town. So uh, in essence, uh I uh would be open to uh conditions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Krista?
Okay, so um it's probably not going to be a surprise to most of you, but I have issues with the text amendment. Um, this is something I've brought up in the past on other projects and it continues to bother me. Um, so there's three issues I have. The first is hearing the text amendment simultaneously with a special permit application. In the past, I've likened this to the tail wagging the dog a little bit. We, we, you know, see the pretty shiny thing out there that we want. And then we kind of have this process we have to go through to get to it. And I think that hearing them simultaneously really muddies the water, um making it hard for both us as commissioners and for the public to distinguish between our legislative responsibilities of enacting policy and regulations. Um, confusing them with our quasi-judicial responsibilities of applying those regulations to a specific piece of property. Secondly, or along with that, we often see these simultaneous submittals on large-scale projects. And, you know, with a project of this scale and scope, I think, I mean, as someone already said, it's like seven hundred pages of documents. It's a massive amount of information to digest, and I think we choke a little bit. I think it's too much to try and do at once. Um, so that's my first issue. My second issue is with what I've termed project-specific zoning. Others would call it spot zoning. That's a legal argument I choose not to make with a bunch of attorneys. Um, but, you know, the applicants want to say this is not project-specific zoning, the quasi-public library overlay zone, that it could be applied to other libraries in New Canaan. In theory, that's a fair argument. In reality, I don't think the town of New Canaan is going to have a second or third quasi-public library. And if it did, and it wanted to use this regulation, that quasi-public library would have to be on two acres on a state road in the retail business or apartment zones and contain a private park. It would essentially have to look exactly like the library we're being asked to approve now. So, I mean, I continue to argue that this is project-specific zoning. What's the big deal with that? Um, for me, it's very much a philosophical issue. I think that project-specific zoning really undermines the purpose of zoning. Which is to protect the health, safety, welfare and property values by providing both predictability and uniformity in the development pattern. Predictability in the sense that you know what the property zone, therefore you have some idea of what can be built there. Uniformity in the sense that, you know, you know what the setbacks, the height, those types of development standards would be. When we let applicants write their own regulations to support their own project, I think that we basically undermine both the uniformity and predictability that the zoning should provide. Um, I also think it sets a very dangerous precedent when we allow applicants to write their own regulations when they want to kind of get around ours. I think there is a time and a place, don't get me wrong, where we do need to write new regulations. I think you all also know that I'm no stranger to wanting to write new regulations about things. That's, that's not my issue, but let me give you an issue that I think really might bring this home. We've been working in the subcommittee now for months on an inclusionary zoning regulation. Um, and I can totally see the scenario that if that ever gets approved and the, right now it's written as multifamily apartment, business and retail zones. We'll have applicants come in that are going to build more than four multifamily units. They don't want to do the affordable units as required by inclusionary zoning. And they're gonna write, they're, they're gonna try and write their own districts. And, you know, the more we continue to allow applicants to do this, I think the harder it is to say, well, this is where we're gonna stop it here. Um, my last main issue with the text amendment is that I don't think it's necessary for this project. I think this project could have come in as a map change for the entire site to the Business A Zone with some minor modifications to the Business A Zone specific to a quasi-public library use. And I went over those in one of the recent meetings with the applicant. I think the main rub there is that the Village District Design Guidelines would apply, and the applicant didn't want to have to contend with those. And yet, as I also tried to point out, it's not that we've been able to avoid a conversation about historic preservation by not coming in um under the Village District Design Guidelines, because as other commissioners have pointed out, our P O C D um, you know, is kind of the basis for our Village District Design Guidelines, and there's a strong precedent in our P O C D for historic preservation. So if, you know, for no other reason philosophically, I'm just opposed to the way this text amendment's been put forward, so I will be a no on that. In terms of the special permit application, like many of the other commissioners, I'm torn. Um, I used to have a professor in college who said, politics is the art of conflict resolution. And I would add to that, that planning is the art of community building. And community building to me is more than just the physical environment of libraries, schools and parks. It's also the social fabric that knits us together. And more than any project that I've ever had an opportunity to work on, this is a community project in its truest sense. It's funded by the community for everybody in this community. And, you know, while at the end of the day, maybe we'll end up with a new library. I mean, I certainly hope we do have a new library because like met everyone else here, you know, I agree we need one. Um, I'm not sure, I, I feel like we've failed to resolve the conflict to really build that social fabric. And in some sense, I think we've, we've torn it apart a little bit. Um, like Mr. Radman said, I guess maybe it's because of this process that I'm left feeling a little bit unfulfilled with the application that's before us. I actually am surprising myself because I was all for it at the beginning, um but I, I truly feel right now like there is a better project waiting to be found, one that incorporates the nineteen thirteen library into a larger design. Um, I think the alternative proposals we've been given, you know, they, they do the job of preserving the building. It still doesn't feel super cohesive to me. It kind of feels like a last pale, last ditch Hill Mary to kind of hold on to something that was important, but that wasn't really truly incorporated into the design. Um, that being said, I could go either way on the special permit. Um, you know, I, I don't, I don't I mean, I'm open to what the attorneys have to say. I, I don't really see the option of putting a lot of conditions on preserving the nineteen thirteen library. That does feel like a taking to me. But, you know, if the commission's able to come up with something, I'm, I'm open to it. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Krista. Anybody else? Art? You're on mute.
Thank you. I'll, I'll speak briefly. Um, I think that the question of whether we should have a new library is, is one that probably is more appropriately a selectman question because of the amount of money that's involved in it. Um, however, uh as a resident of this town going back to nineteen ninety, I do recall a point at which we actually had a big discussion about whether to renovate the elementary schools at what was then an aggregate cost of twenty-two or twenty-three million dollars, and it was a big deal, believe it or not. I think that the new library is an important feature of the town. I also think, and I was surprised at the lack of clarity in the public meetings about why donors might give away or quit and um other issues, but I, I, I am in favor of the new library. I think that it would be appropriate to give some reasonable conditions that would allow for a period of time for the, I'll call it the preservation community to actually come up with a funded um alternative plan. I think that any costs associated with redesign should be borne immediately by that group as opposed to the uh budget associated with the New Canaan Library Association. Um, you know, I, I don't think, uh, I was disappointed that the um group that came together that they were reach any, any apparent conclusion that, that said there's a way to integrate this. It may be that we have to take at face value, the possibility that there is no option. But I think that to stop the new library will actually uh be a disincentive to economic growth in the town in the same way that had we stopped the elementary school renovations at West, East and South Schools followed by Saks and the high school, we would have been at a loss later on in terms of development capacity.
Thank you, Art. Anybody else?
John, I can be quick.
Chris, uh, you're not seated. I'm sorry. Okay, um.
Can I say something real quick?
Yeah, absolutely. Go ahead, Claire.
Um, just listening to everyone, I, I kind of, I, I agree with everyone a little bit. Um, started, when this process started out, I was in favor of the new library a hundred percent. I still feel like I am in favor of the new library. Um, it was discouraging to me to hear the Preservation Alliance and the library each say that there couldn't be a compromise to incorporate the nineteen thirteen building into the new, the new library, which I thought was very disappointing. I think if they could come up with a compromise, I think everyone would be happy and everyone would agree to it easily. I do not, I'm not in favor of having the Preservation Alliance come up with a financial plan for the nineteen thirteen building. If it's not gonna be part of the library, I don't think it should exist. And quite frankly, I don't think that's a Preservation's Alliance job is to find a tenant. And I wanted to ask Mr. Gelderman, can that actually happen? Can you ask a private property owner to do something with their property that they don't necessarily want to do? Is he still here?
I'm here. Yes, I'm here. Um, well, you can ask. In the context of an application is a little different than in a normal context where you can't require a property owner to do something with their property that, that they don't want to do, as long as what they want to do is legal. But in the context of an application where they're asking for something, it, it may be appropriate to put a condition on. It, it's a little bit of a tricky issue. It's, it's um, I tried to do a little research ahead of time anticipating this question. There's really not a whole lot of uh case law on something like this. Um, but if you put a condition, for example, on an approval that required the applicant to uh keep the, the nineteen thirteen building, for example, um the applicant could say, well, I'm not gonna do that. And they have two choices. They can take an appeal from that decision. They can withdraw the application and say, well, we're not, we'll come back with something else. Um, we can't force them necessarily to do something. They have a choice to make if, if the commission puts a condition on an approval that the, that the applicant is unwilling to accept. So it's, it's um uh, you know, it's, it's a very kind of a tricky legal question there. We, we technically cannot make them do something they don't want to do in terms of keeping or not keeping a building. Um, we can put a condition on an approval. They can then determine whether it's appropriate for them to, to take advantage of that approval or not. Um, either take an appeal or say, well, we're going in a different route, we're going a different route. So it's uh that's kind of the answer. I know it's not, you know, it's not the, it's not the most concrete answer out there, but there's not uh, yeah, and I've read both and I've read both sides. I've tried to do some research. There's not a clear answer. Um, one way or the other on that. So it would be subject to being tested in court. Um, there's no question about that, I think.
Thank you.
Mr. Gelderman, just one more. This is Krista Nielsen. One more question on that. So, I mean, if I understand you, we've had a lot of conversations or there have been conversations, I should say, among the attorneys involved in the project about taking, or I can't remember what the other word.
Inverse condemnation.
Inverse condemnation. Is your, if, if I'm understanding you correctly, what you're saying is that conditioning some sort of something for the nineteen thirteen library doesn't actually const- well, obviously needs to be tested in the court, but doesn't necessarily constitute either of those because there is a remedy available, which would be either appeal or withdrawal. Is that?
Right, the, the, yes. The, the, the concept being that the government, you know, requiring someone to keep something as a condition of a permit, well, the property owner's not being forced to um abide by the, by the, you know, exercise its rights under that permit. abide by the, by the, you know, exercise its rights under that permit. So it, it's but typically, the, a government cannot do that in, just in the, in the context of of um someone who wanted to demolish a building on their property and, and, and someone steps in and says, no, you can't do that. We're not letting you do that. This is a little different than that because it's a condition of a permit and a condition maybe of, of the actual zone change as well. So, and that's a legislative function that, and again, the, the applicant can uh choose not to not to abide by that requirement simply by not exercising its right under the permit. If the library, kind of to put it a different way, if the library came in and said, we want to demolish the nineteen thirteen library. We have no plans to do anything else. We just want to get rid of it. It's a building we don't want to have on our property anymore. Uh, and the town said, well, no, we're not going to let you do that. That, then you get into more of an inverse condemnation issue. This is in the context of a request to do something and it, it brings it into a little bit of a, a different arena. But again, it, there's not a, I, I wish there was a clear answer. I wish there was case law out there that would provide a clear answer to this. There's there's not. And as you said, Krista, it's probably going to be if, if, if the commission goes that route, it's something that will probably be tested in court.
Thank you.
John, Chris, if I can pursue this a bit, so let's say commission in its wisdom says the nineteen thirteen and nineteen thirty-six, let's not forget that, that often gets lost in the shuffle has to be maintained. Now, that means it has to be reconstructed because some walls are missing. So, okay, we decide that. Beyond that is, okay, what does one do with the building? If the owner of the building, which is the library, says we have no use for it, they can just let it sit there vacant. And it becomes more of an art installation than anything else. I don't see how we can require it to be rented to anybody. And we can't require a third party to donate money to help defray the cost. The um New Canaan Preservation Alliance could not come up with the money and then it becomes the uh ultimately the obligation of the property owner, which is the library. Then there's the ongoing cost of maintaining the building, which would fall into the, the, the library. There, there's been talk of, you know, having it rented out to a, a bar, have it to a restaurant, have it as an office with what kind of parking? If we look at the Simpson Plan, it envisions really a new property line, which envisions it being owned by somebody else. And uh an easement on uh the rest of the property. And you have an easement because you have one property owner has an easement over another property owner, which presumes that. So there are a lot of other moving parts in here is besides just keep, keep the building. Is what do you do with the building and how do you finance the building now and in the future? All of which would fall under the uh as a burden on the library. We can't require a third party to kick in for part of it. I don't see how. And particularly requiring them to use it in a certain way they don't want to, I don't see how that's even possible.
I don't disagree with that. If that, if that was a question, John, I, I don't disagree with that.
So by preserving it is preserving it to one end? You know, can, can we, can we force the library? You have to rebuild it because it needs to be rebuilt. There's not much argument here. Has to be rebuilt and you have to use it in a certain way. I don't know if we can do that.
Well, in the context of an application, it's different if there were no application pending, you couldn't do it. There's an application pending and the application has several components, including a text change, the adoption of an overlay zone and a special permit and a site plan. So if, if the alternative, and remember that you're, you're when you're adopting legislation like an overlay zone, you're acting in a legislative capacity. When you're acting, when you're approving a special permit, you're acting in an administrative capacity. So, and by the way, just so everybody's clear, when, once you adopt an overlay zone, the, the applying that overlay zone to a piece of property that fits the criteria of that overlay zone is not legislative, it's administrative. So there's cases on that. So you don't have discretion there at, once you've adopted the overlay zone. If it applies to a particular piece of property and it meets the standards, that's an administrative decision and the difference is discretion. So you have much more discretion when you're acting in a legislative capacity than you do in an administrative capacity. And that's just kind of a side thing. But um I, I agree, but in the context of, of someone coming in with an application to do something and the commission in its legislative uh capacity decides that, well, we're not so sure we want to do that if it means that the building has to be removed. That's a consideration that the commission can make. And again, the caveat is that, you know, court may disagree with that. There's no, there's just not case law in that, unfortunately.
So James Bash, you know, I, I recognize the lack of case law precedent, so I'm going to ask a, a theoretical. Given that the relationship that the town has had with the library, again, I mentioned roughly seventy percent annual contributions to the town, you know, contributions to forty-eight South Avenue, seventy-six parking spaces at the Center Street Lot. It's much different than what I think we, one would, I, I would think would, would construe as the average taking that, you know, we obviously want to prevent the type of eminent domain where the town government comes in and says, I'm going to demolish your property. I'm going to give you some form of compensation. Hopefully it'll be adequate. This feels much different to me in terms of context historically and context going forward. Can you talk at all about the qua- the public-private nature of a library and whether or not that type of public-private partnership in some ways ameliorates or would change the interpretation of what would be a taking?
Off the top of my head, I would probably say it would not because the library owns the property, not the town. So even though there's a relationship between the two, it's private property in that sense. So if the town were to take some portion of the library, remember there's two factors of eminent domain that are critical. If a town takes something, it's got to be for, for a public purpose. A town can't take property just because it wants to. There's got to be a public purpose behind it. And then, of course, the second component is value. You, you don't determine what the, what the taking is worth at the time you take it. You, you deposit some money with the court equal to what you think it's worth. And then the trial is all about how much, not whether you're entitled to take it or not. If a town has the right to take property, you can take it. Uh, and that's not subject to judicial review as long as it's a public purpose. So, uh, but I don't know that the, that the, sort of the relationship between the town and the library makes a big difference in, in the context of whether something would be a taking. And this is, you know, it's not so much a taking as it is an inverse condemnation. It's requiring someone to, to not use their property the way they want to versus the town taking title to the property. It's a little different concept. Usually eminent domain is a concept in which the town or the, the governmental agency takes title and, 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 you know, so.
And, and we might be past this, Mr. Geldman, but if was, if in the instance, in the, in the event that we're
James, we've walked through.
You, you froze there. I didn't.
Yeah, uh, we can't hear him. James? And maybe while, maybe while we get James back online. So Pete, I mean, uh, let's say the commission's talking about two things. Maybe one is, as Mr. Ward has said and others have said, consider requiring the nineteen thirteen library to remain for the period of construction and then basically try to delay a decision there. The other related to that is simply require that the nineteen thirteen library remain. Now, if you're going down those avenues, where would you put that? Would you put it in the overlay zone or would you make it a condition of the special permit?
Well, it would probably have to go into the overlay zone first because conditions on a special permit have to be expressly authorized in the regulation. So, so you'd need to have some language in the overlay zone to be able to have the authority to attach those conditions to the special permit.
I have a quick question. Um, those two conditions you just stated, I don't know if I could propose a third condition or if it just has to be what's before us now. My third condition would be to include the nineteen thirteen portion of the library, not in situ, maybe take like the facade. Because like John Chris said, it's also the nineteen thirty-six building, which isn't much to look at. When you're looking at the nineteen thirteen building, it's really two walls. It's not an entire building. So I think if they could incorporate the facade into a new structure somehow, that'd be great. I don't know if it's too much to ask, but I would just rather that instead of the building in situ.
Did we lose James? Lynn?
Um, yeah, I just emailed him. I, I think he would, he's trying to get back in.
Okay, Dick?
Well, just following up on what Claire was suggesting, uh, I think that's what the library has recently proposed is to create a pavilion that incorporates some of the nineteen thirteen building. I mean, that is a, an alternative approach that I think that the library group is they're seeking some kind of a compromise that, okay, there'll be a remaining hint of the nineteen thirteen building that'll be on the site.
Maybe that dovetails to me now putting in my two cents. Uh, one item is this isn't my two cents, this is from listening in particular to Krista, is um, Krista, you make very, very good points about, you know, what is the right way to do planning? And what is the right way to when and how to use overlay zones? I, I guess my argument would be you know, I think you're probably right, but I'm not sure if I would take my stand on this application. Now, your point is you got to, you got to lay down the law at some point and now's as good a time as any. But I guess as I think about this as opposed to a developer coming in, you know, this is for me at least, um, you know, just a, a, an issue, a, a, a situation that, you know, rises above the fallacies of planning of, of, of usage of that technique. I, I agree with um Claire in the sense that I, I have to say I am unbelievably frustrated at the lack of movement of either side. Um, and, and frankly, I think the, the New Canaan Preservation Alliance has refused to move at all. If, if I could wave a magic wand and, and we're all talking about this, as yet, we could all restart the planning process and have, you know, the nineteen thirteen library have a better job or have, have it been incorporated into the application. But that's not the facts on the ground right now. And, you know, my view is that you know, this project, the New Canaan Library is just unbelievably important to the future of this town. And, and as I went through all the criteria, yeah, I struggle with the right, their criteria. And, and by the way, Ken, my, my view on the P O C D versus the Village District Design Guidelines, and as you know, you, you headed that committee. I was on it as well. You did a lot more work than I did. But I, I, you know, as I think about this, I sort of prioritize the P O C D over the Village District Guidelines. And, and as a couple of us have already noted, if you approve the overlay zone, that sort of takes the Village District Guidelines out of the equation. But I do not believe in a denial. I, I think if we were to deny this application upfront, I think it would be calamitous. I completely disagree. It's just too far along. There's been too much done. There's been too much money invested. So I, I do not believe in that. I also, and we've been talking about this, I, I just think, you know, you've heard Pete's comments and, you know, I've been talking to Pete. And I think giving the New Canaan Preservation Alliance any sort of domain over the nineteen thirteen library, I just don't, and Pete, Pete's the lawyer, I'm not, but I, I don't think it works. And I think it's inviting just a mess of litigation or the library simply walking away. So, you know, then I thought about, you know, as I go through the progression here, you know, we could condition the permanent preservation of the nineteen thirteen library. And, you know, and then the Village Green has to been, be redone. And as I thought about that, I'm just not convinced that there's a, that there's a very high probability that, you know, you can make the nineteen thirteen library work in situ. I, I just struggle with it. So on one hand, you know, like I said, wave the magic wand, go with Dan. Let's, you know, back up the clock a few years and say, look, you have to design this building into the library. Um, I don't think that works. You know, and then the other thing we're talking about is we can condition of keeping the nineteen thirty thirteen library and we make a decision in two years. And, you know, I see some of the same risks and we also in, inject another level of uncertainty. You know, the on level of uncertainty is, okay, well, what happens? And, eh, eh, you know, is, is the library, you know, is it dependent upon certain donors? How does that work? We've always talked about, we shouldn't have to worry about money, but we do have to worry about money. So that concerned me. Um, so as I thought about this, is, you know, I, I felt that, you know, the library potentially, and think about, they're going through a planning process. And, you know, we can say that, you know, they should have known, they should have incorporated the nineteen thirteen library. But they're going through a planning process in which they're assuming there's no longer nineteen thirteen library. Now, as I think Claire said, and I think Dick, you said that, you know, we then detected some progress. And, you know, the nine, the, the library made some progress, but the Preservation Alliance, and, and I guess it's part of the job description of being a preservationist because we saw Mr. Kroski say the same thing. Is if it, it's not preservation unless it stays in situ and in its entirety. And look, I'm not an architect, I'm not a preservationist, but I, I just ask myself if there can be some sort of better compromise than that. And we do, you know, we do potentially have two years in which to reach a resolution. So as I thought about this, you know, I thought about a potential resolution. Now, what I'll say upfront is the resolution I'm going to read does not lock in the preservation of the nineteen thirteen library. So you can say this does not have teeth. On the other hand, I think if the library is given two years, I think they can reengage their donors. They can talk about alternatives. And, you know, potentially, you know, you can come to a resolution. Now, we will not meet that of the New Canaan Preservation Alliance. But I thought of a resolution to the effect of, the commission believes incorporation of the nineteen thirteen library into the new library design and or a largely in situ, in situ, in situ preservation would have been a preferable outcome. But the commission acknowledges that due to the advanced state of the campus design, including timeline and funding issues as well as legal considerations, the aforementioned preference cannot be enforced either practically or legally. Nonetheless, the commission believes an improved commemoration or preservation, so I'm not looking to require the entire preservation. The commission believes an improved commemoration or preservation of the nineteen thirteen library than what is presented in the application can be achieved. The commission notes applicant testimony of willingness to proceed on that basis. The commission further notes testimony by the town of New Canaan, the first electman's testimony I'm referring to, of willingness to support such movement and hopes the New Canaan Pres- and hopes the New Canaan Preservation Alliance would join in such an effort. The Commission stipulates that within one year, not two years, one year, the date of this approval, the applicant will provide an updated report on such efforts at commem- commemoration and or preservation to the Commission. So the concept is the Commission is making very, very clear that there should be an appropriate commemoration or preservation. So that's my idea. Now, to make this happen, given that, you know, you can legit, you can say this is largely toothless, so to speak, and maybe if people like this idea, maybe there's ways we can make it with some teeth. But I think what happens, what has to happen is, you know, the library has to have the courage, the Board of Trustees, to say, look, the town wants some level of preservation of the New Canaan Library. It's our fiduciary duty to attempt to make sure this happens. And then what the New Canaan Preservation Alliance needs to do is they need to have the courage to say, okay, I'm going to give up my doctrinaire viewpoint that unless the building stays as is and is not touched, there can be still the preservation element to it. So those are my thoughts.
John, can I get to that?
Absolutely.
With all due respect, the problem I see with that after uh, ten or twelve years of the library working on that, on the project, they should have come to us with that in the first place. I don't foresee the effort to incorporate a preservation of the structure in a satisfactory way that would that would reflect the intent of the P O C D as part of that resolution. That resolution basically leaves open the door for the compromise to be, and I'm just making this up as a possible option that was, could probably be thrown on the table six months or a year from now, is, well, we're going to create a memorial paving walkway area, and we're going to use the stones from the library and create, you know, uh, engraved names on this courtyard. Well, that's great, and there'll be a nice plaque on the ground. But again, our library is gone. And it's going to be demolished. That's not the intent of the P O C D. That's not the intent of the Village District Guidelines. That's not the intent of our zoning regulations. I'm sorry they spent money on this. I don't think, you know, supporters of the library or the Planning and Zoning Commission should be held accountable or to blame, or should feel guilty the fact that there's been a lot of money and time spent on this. I understand there has been, but that was the responsibility of the library Planning Commission to take into serious account that there would be significant opposition to removing this building and should have worked hard to incorporate it. And had we, had they done that? Had we, had Krista said it, I believe, or, or someone said it had, i- if we were in the position right now where we were looking at approving a new library that incorporated the nineteen thirteen structure that gave them the square footage, the program, and the new building that they're looking for? I don't think there's a single person in this town that would be opposed to it. Not the, not the people donating money, not the library board, not the people in town. There wouldn't be letters of opposition, opposition sent to us that were weaponizing components of the library application to deny it, so on, so on, so on. There's been so much vitriol thrown around in some of these letters that it's, it's really sad. When all we're looking for, and all I think we've ever been looking for from this application was a way to create a new library that respected the historic building that's there. And I don't think the Planning and Zoning Commission's purview here should be to concern ourselves with how much money has been spent on the project thus far. We never look at that. We shouldn't.
Well, I, I, I disagree, but, but let's not argue about that. Um, but my view is I, I'm not ready to deny this application.
I, I just, I just think the resolution that you described leaves a very wide door open for for a, a situation where that library, it's a six months or a year of talks will go by and no one will come to a compromise, and then the library is gone.
Yep. No, I, I said, Dan, I said that upfront.
Yeah, I know.
What it requires is, you know, people to make a genuine effort.
Well, John, uh, Dick Ward, I completely agree that denying in toto this application is just not a, a nonstarter. I mean, you know, we'd all be lynched. This, this, the town would be torn apart. So, uh, you know, I, I agree that we need to find some solution. The building itself of the new library should proceed. And I think most people probably would agree with that. And, you know, what happens to the nineteen thirteen? Does it have to remain as is in situ? Or can it be incorporated somehow into a pavilion? I don't know, but maybe we can hold off on having to grapple with that that decision.
But that shouldn't, that shouldn't be our Dick, Dick, I don't think that should be our decision or design decision, right? We should, we should leave that to the library and the preservationists to come up with the compromise. I don't think we can dictate what that w- w- what the compromise is going to be.
They've had an opportunity to compromise over the past few years, and they haven't.
They have.
I think we need to take a leadership position, not, not wait for two years, but at least a year and say, you need to do something. This is it. You need to compromise, and you have a year to do it. I think that's, it's, it's stating, it's a good leadership position. It's giving them time to compromise when they haven't in the past.
And maybe Kathleen Corbett, who I think did a terrific job, uh, in at least bringing the two sides together twice. There was no satisfactory outcome, obviously. But perhaps over the next year, a, a little more pushing on both sides will cause them to come to a compromise.
I, I worry about it turning into a can kick.
Yep.
We, we move it down a year for what's the deliverable?
Yep.
I haven't been heard what the deliverable is. It's, it's wait for the miracle to happen. Okay, this has been going for, for a while. The folks have been locked in the same room. They still can't come to an agreement. At some point, you have to say, it isn't going to happen. Uh, and if we defer it for a year or two, okay, what, again, what, what's the deliverable? I don't, I don't know what that is. So it, let's say the, uh, the Preservation Alliance comes up with a couple million dollars, so we're to force the library to accept this donation, and then the building has to be rehabilitated, clearly. So who gets to decide that? The Preservation Alliance or the library? So we're turning control of the, of their building over to a third party, in effect, saying you're going to rehab it, and this is the way it's going to be done. So the library loses control. And then what do you do with the building after it's been rehabbed, assuming it has been rehabbed? Keep it empty, make it storage, make it a event space, rent it to somebody. Ultimately, this is the decision of the library. They own the building. That's not going to change.
Well, where I, where I thought we had gotten to with the library was, we were at least with a preservation of the facade in some way. And, you know, and again, and Dan, you're right, I'm, I'm not technically equipped here. But, and I sort of thought to myself, you know, maybe the building, maybe all or part of the building could be moved closer to the street. Maybe it could be moved to where the lib, where the facade could be where the library wants it to be. And, and you're right, as I thought through this, I acknowledge the fact, I, the New Canaan Preservation, Preservation Alliance's position is nothing can move. And they're hard and fast. So that, that's their position. So that's why when I thought about this, it, it's a weak resolution. I get that, Dan. But when I thought about it is if someone can make it happen, it, it has to be the library and can be the library. They ultimately own the property. John Chris, to your point.
I mean, so just to follow up on John Chris's point and, and others, we're, we've talked a little bit about agency and a, a couple of Commission members have mentioned uh, that we shouldn't give agency to the N C P A. If we're not going to give an agency the N C P A, who are we going to give agency to?
The library.
Into, but let's say this is a conditional, you know, it's a conditionality solution where a financial or use plan, again, similar to section one point, point oh eight, is something that we insert, just that theoretical. In that theoretical, we're going to give agency to the library? That, that I don't see how that works.
They own the property.
Yeah, it's the library's property.
Yeah, and I mean, I think if the library needed funding or needed help or wanted help, they could go and make an agreement with the Preservation Alliance or whatever other preservation group and, you know, get that money some other way, but I don't think we can condition that.
Okay.
Money shows up.
So, okay, so we would, we would give agency to the library to, uh, force either come up with the money themselves, or to have some other entity outside of the N C P A come up with the money for um, the viability of the nineteen thirteen building? That, that's going to work? I mean.
Well, what I'm saying is that the library has already put an offer on the table. And what I'm also saying is the first electman in testimony to the Commission expressed a willingness to further help financially.
What is the offer? What is the offer from the library exactly?
You mean the ask of the library, the op?
No, no.
Oh, oh, to, uh, it's what Lisa Oldham said in the last meeting, which is to put the facade, facade towards the back of the property.
Put this facade towards the back of the property.
You know, Dan, Dan, it's a start.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I mean, just thinking through this and, and give me, give me one minute to just explain. The I, I, I completely understand the library's unwillingness to redesign for a whole redesign. But the, the manner in which the current footprint of the lib, the proposed library is, it's essentially wrapping the old structure to be built so that the old structure stays in place and then comes down later. We all get that. We know the efficiencies of that and the cost implications. If there was, and I'm just throwing this out there as, as a discussion point, and obviously the library and the N C P, and N C P A would have to talk about this and discuss the viability of this, but if we take out one component of the uh, preservation of this library being that the building is in the exact location where it is on that property, remove that condition and say, and we discussed this, and the third party consultant that we hired to analyze this, and the N C P A had people responding to the moving of the building, what that would involve to a different site and the implications on state roads and taking lines down. We wouldn't have to do any of that. What I could foresee happening here is where the majority of the new library as designed could be built. And a portion of that new library and that portion, I re, I'm referring to the conference center, which they had a kitchen and a cafe and a lounge area, all of which created kind of an L-shaped um, wrap around the old structure on the south side of the old structure. If that portion could be redesigned such that the old library could literally be lifted and shifted south by, I don't know, a hundred fifty feet to bring it closer to the existing, to the currently proposed new library. And obviously, there would have to be a little bit of finessing in design. That would achieve two things. It would achieve the preservation of the, of the structure, the nineteen thirteen structure, maybe not as a whole, but as a majority of the existing structure. It would maintain the integrity of the existing library design as proposed, but would require some modifications to tie the two together. And the third thing it would do, it would pull the old library off of that corner to give more green space to that corner. Now, whether that green space really becomes a town green, and to Mr. Ward's comment, I completely agree, you know, busiest intersection in town, and whether it's going to actually be used that way, that's, that's a debatable issue. But obviously, the, the green space is a, is an important part of the library application. They've made that clear. And I think this type of a, if you want to call it a slide in the programming and the design might be a way to a some sort of a compromise.
Yeah, I mean, don't get me wrong, Dan. Uh, uh, where, where I'm trying to go with this is to encourage the library to do something like that. So, you know, I was going with Lisa Oldham's proposal. Um, I was thinking about other things that, you know, you're the architect, I'm not. So, you know, if that worked much better, you know, fantastic. So the question that I'm grappling with is, is how, what I would like to do is not overly tie the library's hands at the same time, try to provide motivation for them to, you know, if, if, if the Radman idea is the best idea, provide them with motivation to do the Radman idea. And, and I, and, and as I thought about this, um, and, and I the New Canaan Preservation Alliance, very, very smart people. But they did not, they were refusing to move at all. And, you know, look, it's, it's still the library's property. I mean, we can talk about, you know, private-public partnership and, you know, and we've given a lot. I've talked about parking at Infinitum, and we know about, you know, obviously, the ten million, et cetera, et cetera. But, you know, if there's a way we could encourage that, that's what I was trying to come up with in, in my resolution. And absolutely, can my resolution be ignored as written? Yes. I mean, if people like the idea of the resolution and people, you know, maybe Pete Gelderman could help here. If people could think about how to make it stronger without, um, without unduly tying the hands of the library to go forward.
Chairman, I would see that your suggestion is really, you know, with respect to a thick leaf. Um, and I don't see this as I, I, I don't see this as being particularly, um, appealing to the New Canaan Preservation Alliance, which has decided they want to die on that particular hill. Uh, time and again, I mean, I posed the question to some of the people in the, the Alliance and uh, meetings here at the Commission, said, so you want to own the property? Yes. If you don't want it, you just give it to us, we'll take it.
And John, I'm, I'm not, John, I'm not talking about the Preservation Alliance. That's my point.
I, you know, it's, 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 this is almost a, a classic New Canaan issue that everyone should get what everyone wants. And if you don't, somehow the world has fallen off its axis. Um, it'd be nice, but I, I see these as somewhat mutually exclusive issues. Um, what we can do is simply say to the library, uh, any, in, in effect, any uh, design you bring to us that does not incorporate the nineteen thirteen and nineteen thirty six library that keeps getting forgot, forgotten, uh, is just a nonstarter. So go back to the drawing board and bring something. No. Uh, we, we certainly can send that message. Um, I'm not sure, I don't think there will be a wise message, but we can. But, um, I, I've thought again and again on how to square the circle on this one, and you know, we, we could have a memorial somewhere, or we could have, uh, you know, a, a part of the facade, put somewhere as an art installation, in effect. I'm not sure any of those are going to be satisfactory to the people who really want to preserve the older buildings in toto in situ. And so
Well, I, I wouldn't be surprised, you know, you talk about the number of signatures that talk about preserving the library. As, you know, an interesting question is how much of that population believes that it has to be nineteen thirteen and nineteen thirty six in situ? That may not be the case.
Any number, any number of older buildings that all of us can name that have been moved to preserve them.
Yep.
Uh, happens all the time. Uh, sometimes because they have subsidence or some sort of, uh, uh, structural issue with the, with the, with the ground that has to be moved. I know the Black Island Lighthouse was pulled back a couple hundred feet, so it didn't fall in the ocean. Uh, this stuff happens all the time. But, um, is it going to happen here? Uh, New Canaan Preservation Alliance, for one, has said, you know, it has to stay there. Uh, and there's the expense of, of moving it. Uh, the library said, if someone wants to take it, it's yours. Uh, and there's the expense of of moving it. Uh, the library said if someone wants to take it, it's yours. Uh, there were no takers on that offer that I remember. So we're sort of back to where we started. And I would agree with you, Mr. Chairman. It would be a sad day in this town if we don't get a new library. Would be a real sad day.
Guess, you know, putting on my, how do we? You know, find an exit strategy here. Um. I I mean, look, what I, what I, what I've been talking about is my view, to be perfectly clear, but now putting on my chairman's hat. Um, I think a potential decision by the commission right now. John is not a straight up approval. You know, I know you advocate the straight up approval. But um, most of the rest of the commissioners, you know, don't agree with just a. Straight up approvals. That's also part why, part, part of what I'm trying to achieve here.
Question for uh, Mr. Gelderman. So if the. The NCPA has a statutory right to appeal, as I understand it. If they did, uh. Any sense in how long the likely delay would be and what you think from a legal perspective, the likely outcome. Would be on construction of the new li, library project if this went to appeal?
Well, it would take a minimum of one year for the Superior Court to make a decision, minimum. And um. If someone was unhappy of the, about the, that decision. And receive permission to file an appeal to the appellate court through certification, that would be another year, year and a half. So. At least a year and and, you know, up to three, I suppose, depending on where it went after the Superior Court.
Have you seen many instances and situations maybe comparable to this? Where um that appeal was dismissed well before a year?
Uh, not these days. Um, no. The briefing schedule, you know, there's a, there's a scheduling order that gets adopted and then the court can set a a trial date. That can happen within a year, earlier than a year, but then uh, the trial court has a hundred and twenty days to make a decision. And in the. In the COVID era, that it's, it's taking every bit of that. Now, the COVID era is almost over, but um, so it, you know. But I, no, I haven't seen any that that have been resolved at the Superior Court level in less than a year.
Okay, thank you.
So I guess I struggle with, is it our job as a commission to find the compromise here? Because basically, I think if we do, we're probably not going to make. Anybody totally happy. And I mean, obviously, that is the nature of a compromise is that nobody gets fully what they want. Um, and you know, are we, are we comfortable doing that or do we feel like? The applicant should have figured, you know, someone else should have figured out the compromise and we just have to look at what's before us. And I I don't have the answer. I truly don't know. Where I stand on that.
I I I personally think it's as cut and dry as the current application does not satisfy the P O C D as written. And we can provide either a full denial or conditional approval that the. Nineteen thirteen building be. May um, kept, maintained, salvaged, whatever term we'd like to use. Not necessarily in its exact position, but on the site somewhere. And leave that design problem and solution up to the applicant. They've, um, they've said they've looked at it twelve different ways. I'm sure one of those ways. Had some viability to it. Um. They should revisit those options.
And now, Dan, uh, and you you might have said this at the beginning, so would you? When you, when you say that, is it nineteen thirteen, nineteen thirty six in total? Or do you use, do you leave them room for creativity?
I uh. I I think you leave them room. I I I would say at a minimum, the nineteen thirteen. Um, preferably both. But I think that little bit of latitude might go a long way. For the library team, the design team in trying to fit that. Puzzle piece back into their site and their design solution.
Okay, so potentially, um, Dan, don't take this the wrong way. We've got John Chris. On, we should approve it pretty much as is and, you know, with some modifications. We've got Dan who um has been the most vocal. In terms of, I'm not comfortable with what's been presented. But I'm now willing to accept an approval with the condition with. I, Pete, Pete, I don't mean condition legally, but the concept you laid out. And then potentially, there's another road, which is my proposal where. Um. It's um, it's an approval, but with a resolution of encouragement. I'm I'm trying to figure out an exit strategy at this point as to, you know, how do we get something drafted?
Sure.
And 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 consider it at our end of June meeting.
Well, somehow, if we can come up with, approve the bill, the new building itself. And postpone a final decision on the Green versus nineteen thirteen. And hopefully, whether it's one year, two years, whatever the time is, that. Pressures can be brought on both sides to come together.
Okay, then. That's a fourth idea.
I don't think that's going to work. I think that's going to go to John Chris's comment of kicking the can down the road and it's just going to fizzle within a year or two. Um, Mr. Gelderman, just um, Pete, wh- what what Mr. Goodwin just said, my idea of. You know, keeping the building somewhere on the site and leaving it up to the library to design. Am I understanding that correctly, that that cannot be? That cannot be strict condition of approval?
Well, of the approval of the special permit?
Yes.
In the absence of some kind of a modification to the uh overlay zone regulation. Probably not. It would be difficult because it needs to be authorized. Um, in the regulation itself. So, but.
So it's more of a recommendation rather than a condition?
Well, yeah, and a recommendation, I mean, consider this, and I'm just listening and offering something if. If uh, if you approve the application and you make a recommendation. Um, you know, one of the arguments might be, well, what's the incentive for the library to? Get to a result. They've got their approval. That's just, that's not really a legal opinion. I probably shouldn't even be saying it, but um. But so, but the legal part of that is, is that. There needs to be, I think, um, some kind of teeth in whatever condition that the. Commission decides is appropriate and and authorized by the overlay zone and then. Um, then it becomes up to the parties, the the applicant. To determine whether that's something they can live with or not live with. And they have two choices. They can take an appeal or they can say, well, forget it. We're not doing it.
So. So as a. So as as a, one of the. Conditions is the modification to a text modification for this overlay zone. Separate from the special permit of the building itself. Could that language incorporate? Something about maintaining historic structures within that new zone?
Yes, that would be something that would need to be in the overlay. Regulations if you wanted to make that a condition of a special permit. It could be done.
Right, so we we couldn't necessarily make it a condition of their special permit for the building itself. But we could make it a a a condition of the overlay zone that all historic structures are maintained.
Right, not so much a condition, but a, but part of that regulation.
Part of that regulation, yeah.
Right, yep.
Understood.
What's in the historic structure?
I, yeah, that's the next question, um.
It's old. It's not in the natural register, uh, historic places, um. What's the historic structure? Lawyers love talking about language definition and uh, someone's going to really want to peel that onion.
Yep.
Your structure.
Given that, as I've already pointed out, this is project specific zoning, why don't you just say any buildings built before nineteen thirty seven? In the, in the text amendment itself, I mean.
Yeah.
We were already saying two acres and in a specific, you know, on state roads and stuff. Why not just call out the year?
Yeah.
Would they have to move the entire building or could they decide to move a portion of it? Cause I think. Oh.
I think, I think that's for the applicant to solve.
So in effect, we're saying, um. Come back with a plan to conserve the nineteen thirteen and or nineteen thirty six. We slowly figured that out. Uh, buildings.
That's kind of the same thing that John said in his resolution.
Well, the resolution, as I understood it, was a recommendation which does not have the force of law. It's that we think it'd be real nice if this happened. But we can't force you to do it because we've already given you permission to do what it is you want to do.
But I think what Pete's saying is that if we put it in the text amendment, that's saying that you have to preserve historic structures on the lot dating from before. Whatever nineteen thirty seven, nineteen fourteen. That then that becomes regulatory, like they have to do it in some capacity. And then we can condition the special permit saying you didn't meet this part of the regulation that we just approved for your site.
Okay, so I'm the library. I see this and I say, you you're forcing me to have this. Maintain this building, which I don't want to maintain. I don't want to keep. I have no use for. Okay, forget it.
Pete, if if you did, if if you put, if you've put wording like that. In the overlay zone, can it then be part of the wording, the oversla, lay zone or a condition within the special permit that? The. They would have to come to the commission for approval of the plan? Cause Dan, that's, Dan, I is, I mean, Dan, you're saying the applicant's got to figure it out. But are you saying you, the the commission should approve a plan or?
I'm I'm torn, um. The the problem is if we're approving the special permit application with the building as submitted. Then there's no incentive for the applicant to redesign the building. Properly. Um.
No, I know, and I'm just. Trying, yeah, I'm trying to help.
Could I just, could I just interject? I actually think there may be a big incentive because um. If I heard the earlier litigation conversation and I were the library. Um, I think I'm probably facing the possibility that it might be easier to redesign. And incorporate something rational than to go through the length of time that may be involved in going through a litigation process.
So agreed. I would agree with that.
The only concern with that would be. And then the, the New Canaan Preservation Alliance would need to change their position because the redesign would not mean nineteen thirteen, nine thirty. Thirty six in situ. So the risk would still be out there. Okay, so I I think what's on the table is. One, it's approved. Pretty much as is, I would urge. For those who are thinking of voting that way, to consider adding my resolution. Um, and then two is applying language. To the overlay zone. Of some degree of preservation of historical structures with the definition of, you know, nineteen thirty seven or older, whatever. Um. And then. And then the question, you know, Dan, you said you're, you're not sure as to whether. You know, the condition into the special permit, then again, I mean, Pete, you would help us put, put what, where. You know, would be, does the library have to come back to the commission with the plan or? I guess they'd have to, but the, but, you know, the library had, I mean, the applicant has to somehow just adhere to the overlay zone criteria.
Right, remember the, oh, excuse me, once you establish the overlay zone. Everything else becomes administrative, so.
Yeah.
Um, Mr. Geldman, I have a question about this. So if we were to put something in the overlay zone, requiring them to retain historic structures built before. Whatever the date. And they've, I mean, and they don't like that condition, but now we've rezoned their property to this overlay. Like, we've taken away any optionality that they have that we discussed earlier in the special permit, kind of gives them. The remedy, like, or is that okay for us to do? Like, we've now said you have to do this and we rezoned your property because you asked us to and now you don't have a choice?
Well, it's an overlay, you're not really um. Necessarily rezoning the property. It still retains its existing zoning characteristic. The overlay zone just can be applied if it, if all the criteria are met to that, so you haven't. Actually rezoned that property. You've just established an overlay zone. Where their property would fit all the criteria, but you haven't rezoned it.
Okay, so they could still just build based on the underlying zone, like that, that right hasn't been taken away?
Right.
Got it.
So so I I see a couple of issues. One is if you make the historic preservation part of the overlay zone, right, text amendment. There is no optionality in the future. Let's say it's three years down the road. Where the financial or use plan doesn't really come together. And it winds up being the burden of the taxpayers um in funding seventy percent of the contribution towards the new library. To maintain the ongoing funding for the nineteen thirteen, nineteen thirty six library. Once you make it part of that overlay zone regulation, you nullify that possibility of the library at any point. Um, or taxpayers or other stakeholders are at any point saying this is not viable financially to do this.
Well, you you could amend the overlay zone again.
The, well, the other thing I was thinking, John, is that. Why wouldn't the library just, if they don't like the overlay zone regulation, just resubmit this under. The existing regulations concerning, you know, business A and apartment zones. Where there actually isn't a huge amount of deviation between our regulations for those zones. And um, what what the applicant has submitted.
I I think one of the things the library is going to say, what they have said, is they need to get going. And we'd be, we'd be looking at another three, four month process.
But I think the reality of this is. I can't see a situation right now unless we can come up, whether it's us facilitating another town body or Kathleen Corbide facilitating this. There is no resolution where we're going to have be shovel in the ground ready. Anytime soon, given the current posture, we either have in all likelihood. An appeal process that's going to last at least a year. Who knows how much longer than a year to exhaust all of those appeals? Or we have the the library's current posture, which is unless the cap, application is approved as is. We're going to give the donor money back. I I think everyone, it should be clear that everyone should be incentivized to come up with. Some sort of solution, whether or not every party is going to be happy, but it's hopefully good enough. Because we're not going to start this project anytime soon until we get to that realization.
To to, to James's point, I think there's a third option. I I don't, I don't think it's just those two. I think the third one is. A redesign process. Look at it from a standpoint of, okay, well, we have to maintain the nineteen thirteen and nineteen thirty six, whatever. Components of on the site somewhere. Let's redesign this, redesign it as quickly as possible and then get shovels in the ground.
You think about um, changing the overlay zone language to require preservation of historic. You think about, um, changing the overlay zone language to require preservation of historic structures, you have to define what historic structure is. So you got that. What is it, forty percent of the nineteen thirty-six and nineteen thirteen libraries don't exist anymore, the walls are gone? So. You preserve a couple of walls standing, that's it? The, the buildings aren't there, most of them are, do not exist anymore, they were torn down when they added on to them. And so, in effect, we're not saying preserve it, we're saying, keep what you got and then reconstruct it. As it was, you know, recreate the status quo ante in nineteen thirty-six or nineteen thirteen, depending on which one you wanna keep. Uh, that's a whole different situation, but preservation of it, there, there's only so much that's left to preserve. It's really a reconstruction job, and this is, I think, been made clear by everybody. Most people have different views on it. You were submitting information saying that many of these walls do not exist, we've all been in the library. In that part of the library, who hasn't been? We've all been there, those walls don't exist. Those, those structures are, have mostly been torn, most, I think it's about forty percent have been torn down. This, this is, this is the card that's been dealt. To us. It's a reconstruction. Of a building. Or buildings, depending on how you wanted to find the thirty-six and thirteen buildings. So doing it that way sounds awkward to me. I would suggest that of the, of the options, I, I support my own option, full disclosure. Quite of a authorship, uh, a, a close second by, by a nose would be the chairman's statement of a, um, recommendation. That's where I'm coming out. But I would reiterate that. Not. Creating a new library for this town would be really, really sad. And if we believe that health, health and welfare are, uh. Important. We need a new library. It's a lynchpin, I think, of a lot of health and welfare in this town.
Yep, John, I'd be leaning towards your recommendation approval, but with the resolution and probably second would be John's.
Okay, well, I, I think, and, and again, what I'm trying to do right now. Is. Come up with. Hopefully only two, but, you know, alternatives for Lynn to work on in the next two week, two and a half weeks. So I think. Alternative number one is. You know, the Chris Goodwin idea and. You know. We can pay for that. So then I guess what I'm coming back to. And Dick Ward, what I'm. I guess what I'm wondering is. If there was something. I guess not, I, I was thinking what Dan was talking about, you do put something into an overlay zone. And again, the concept here is to get something drafted that we can think about. You know, tonight is not to make a decision, tonight is to come up with a potential solution set. So I'm wondering, and I'm, we're gonna have to go to Lynn and say, okay, Lynn, can you, can you wordsmith all this stuff? But. I think what Dan is saying is you. You have some level of required. Preservation. But you're not so much saying that, you're saying, I just, I wanna keep it there for two years, I mean. What, what would you do?
Um, I'm not sure I understand the question.
I'm asking Dick Ward.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry.
Oh, okay, I wasn't following that, John.
Yeah.
Me either.
Well, you know, English is, uh, is my third language. I guess what I'm, what I'm trying to do is I'm trying to come up with a second proposal. And Dick, what you have said is you would like to see the nineteen thirteen library. Stay there, the decisions made in two years, is that what you're saying?
No, not quite.
Okay.
I guess what I'm saying is approve and build the new library now. Get on with it.
Right.
In a year or two years, we will again have to review. Whether it's gonna be nineteen thirteen building or grass. And maybe at that time. The Preservation Alliance will not have come up with any helpful compromise or money. And therefore, the nineteen thirteen building will probably look like it'll become toast. And it'll be grass.
Dick, doesn't that preclude incorporating some aspects of the nineteen thirteen library into the new library? Cause I think after two years, you're stuck.
Yeah, you're stuck. The new building is built. They're done and dusted, they've got the structure they're looking for, they can basically just turn their backs and say. Yeah, yeah, we're, we're done, we've got what we wanted. It's up to you, we can tear it down, you can keep it, you can go rent it, or it'll become, you know, a condemned building that's falling to disrepair because no one wants to touch it. That's what's gonna happen. Again, this is a situation where we need to put together a, can either. Uh, a conditional approval of some sort. Or a rejection. To force the applicant to comply with town regulations. Right, and I, I don't think we should be forced because of cost and time and pressure and. All, all those things that technically aren't, we're not supposed to be considering. Because. We can't fix the, the, the pickle that the libraries got themselves into. Right, this could have, like we've all said, this could have been solved years ago with a consideration of keeping the existing structure and incorporating into the design.
Okay, but that's. We're beyond that point.
No, I don't think we are, I don't think we are, I think, I think we need to approach it from a standpoint of, hey. Conditional approval, keep the existing structure, you can have your library on the site, their new library, you can. Will approve the, the text amendments to the, uh, the overlay zone with these. Maybe some basic language changes, but you need to incorporate the old library building. And it's not gonna become, you know, paving stones on a courtyard, but it'll be incorporated into the design somehow.
What if it's a facade on a pavilion?
Yeah, could be, like, like I said, I don't think. We, the Planning and Zoning Commission should design it for them. Right? We are here to. Be the interpreters and, and, um, holders of the town's. Regulations, including the P O C D. Um, and enforcing what we believe. An application should do to satisfy those conditions. And I don't, I don't think this application does that.
Mister Chairman, Kent Turner, could you, um. Clarify what the library is proposing as far as, uh. Reusing the nineteen thirteen. Part of the building.
It, it's, it's, um. It was, what, what was talked about, um, I don't have all the details, Kent, but, you know, the, the general idea was. They preserve. I think the entire facade from one end to the other. And it's towards the back of the property. On the west side of the property. Can I give you more better detail than that? No, but that's generally the concept.
Okay, well, if, if they are proposing this, um. You know, as a condition, I mean, they're, they're making a gesture. Could we, uh, further, uh. Elaborate on what that is and perhaps. Uh, let them present to us a design that, um, you know, exactly what they're proposing so that, um, you know, we could. Have some kind of input on the final character of it and placement. And, um. That would be, um. You know, gesture in, in saving some historic fabric of the building?
We. We probably could. I think, Pete. Yeah, I mean, there, there's a way to wordsmith, and so Pete, at the end of the last meeting. They had written us a letter and I asked them to expand upon what they had said in the letter. And Ms. Oldham, who was the director of the library. You know, and, and the tapes are out there, we can re-listen to the tapes, it's a public record, right? Um, but she suggested, here's what we could do. Um, so I guess what Kent is saying. In a potential approval. Could we condition of. The approval upon approving their proposal and. I guess kind of what you would want to do. Is potentially work with them to. Find something that's satisfactory, more satisfactory if, if you did not love the origin, the first proposal, I mean. Pete, I assume that can be.
Again. You can, if, if an applicant volunteers. A condition. It can be incorporated. You could do that even without a change to the. Regulation to the overlay zone because it's been, um, suggested and agreed to by an applicant. So you can incorporate something if, if the applicant has volunteered.
Which they clearly have.
Well, on the west side of the property, part of it borders the gas station. There is now a kind of a fence falling down, I gotta believe gets ripped out at some point. So you rip out the old fence, you're gonna want something to, to screen the gas station. Take some of the walls, the old. Library, move them over there, it becomes essentially a fieldstone fence.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
Want me to do it?
I, I, I mean, interesting idea, but I don't, I don't think, um.
A little tricky structurally to do that.
Well, not.
It also won't satisfy the preservations.
It, well, no.
What's gonna satisfy them besides everything stays as is?
It, it will not satisfy them, um, there has to be some kind of historical, historic, history, historical, excuse me, historical integrity to, um. What is kept in the existing building. And, you know, to put it up as a fence, you know, uh, you know, it, it has to have more of, of substance and, and significance than that.
Well, with all due respect to Mr. Chris, that was Mr. Chris's interpretation, that's not what the library said.
What did the library say, though? What's it gonna be, an art installation somewhere?
No, what they said they were going to, I mean, we listened to the tape. Um, because I'm, I'm obviously doing a terrible job of trying to repeat what Ms. Oldham.
They said they were gonna put a mural up and then they were gonna read some of the bricks.
No, I don't think it was a. Okay.
Yeah, some of the. They were, they were gonna keep some component, they were gonna keep some component of the library, interpret that as you wish.
I think they used the term pavilion, didn't they?
I don't remember that. Maybe.
I thought I saw that.
Can we?
But, 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 let, let's be clear, let's just make sure we're talking about what Ms. Oldham said at the, at the end of the last meeting because. You know, they said other things at other different points earlier in the application process, so. Yeah, let's just.
Well, can't, can't we get that clarified? I mean.
So I think it was a twenty by ten foot memorial structure. It was a photo book. And I think, um, it was incorporating some of the stones along the sidewalk.
That, that was, but what I'm, what I'm, that's what I've, that's not what it was, what, what, what I'm talking about is what she proposed at the end of the last meeting. What you're talking about is something they proposed earlier in the application process.
Okay.
Which we don't believe would be satisfactory. In my opinion.
But, I mean, I thought we were going in a. In a direction. Kent, where you were asking. Can something be done? Where the commission would have input.
Oh, I, I, yes, I am saying that.
Okay.
What I'm against is taking pieces of the building and scattering it throughout the site. And losing the, you know, integrity of, of the, the original structure.
Okay.
To have substance, it has to make a statement and it, um, it has to reflect the historical character.
Right, in, in the same, in the same way that the current nineteen thirteen and nineteen thirty-six library. Maintain their historical integrity on the east and north facades. With what's visible to the two streets and on the south and west facades, they've already been. This deconstructed to some degree in order to integrate into. A building addition that happened after their construction. I think what we're. We're all kind of tiptoeing around is the condition that. That's the, at, at least, I, I think we have to. Establish what it means to this Planning and Zoning Commission. The, what it means to us to maintain the integrity of the historical structure. Right, irrespective of what the N C P A thinks, because they're gonna be to one extreme. And irrespective of what the library commission and application applicants think, because they're gonna look at it from the other extreme. Right? We're here to interpret and set the ground rules for what we believe will be. And, and, and acceptable and appropriate condition. To satisfy the requirements of the P O C D in maintaining. And creating a balance with the development and the historical preservation of buildings in town. And. By creating a condition where we can give it conditional approval, and I'm using that. Phrase loosely, I know it's, we have to package it differently. That the. The. East and north facades. As well as the. Roof design or roof integrity, I'm, I'm just struggling to find the right description here. Of the historic structure are maintained somewhere on site. And, and we can wordsmith that description further, but that would allow the library to. Again, look at it from a standpoint of, okay, well, we're gonna have this. Historical relic. Of the old building that we can maybe reposition on site and then tie it into the rest of the building. And again, we wouldn't be worried about the south or the west facade because those have already been. For the lack of a better term, bastardized, right? They've been peeled apart, they've been de-skinned, they've been reframed, there's different structure in there, we get it. And, and that, that would then lay the groundwork for the applicant to make a concerted effort to integrate. The historical building into their design.
So Dan, you would be comfortable with that?
Provided that the, and again. I, I described it as packaging it, we have to, since we can't condition the special approval with something like that, maybe the overlay zone can pick up on that, but. Recommendations in the special approval might be able to do it. And, and I think we would have to also condition that. No start of construction, the construction on the building can't start. Until we have design resolution.
You mean, construction on the new, on the new library?
Yeah, of course. If, again, going back to your point earlier, if we, or to Dick's point, let's just let them build it and we'll figure it out two years later. That's, that's kind of where, if we don't condition it on a design, an approved design. They're gonna build what they've got and they're gonna walk away from the library. There's no incentive for them to integrate it.
Yeah, I personally, I'm, I'm against holding up construction, I just am, but that's just one commissioner. But again, what we can do is, you know, again, I'm sorry to be repetitive, I'm. You know, what I hear is potential two solutions. And if we can map out the two solutions and we can think about and we can vote on it at the end of June.
No, I, I just wanted to hear the, I, I like what Dan had to say in terms of his vision of, you know, what the appropriate balance is. In the context of the P O C D and I, Ken, I wanted your opinion as another architect to, if you have any initial thoughts as, as well on that.
Well, it's Kent Turner. You know, the. P O C D is. A document that um, lays out, you know, the pros and cons. It, it, it wants to strike a balance. And I think. You know, we're trying to find or create the same kind of um. Similar character or existence of the, the, the building so that the. Existing library is. Uh, is saved to a degree, at least the, the main facade, the nineteen thirteen. Portion and um. That it is um. Blended in with the new construction, the mid-century design. And, you know, the, the two can live together. And I think, you know, the P O C D, that was the, the main point to find that balance, to find that um.
Right.
Common ground. Um, the. Design guidelines, you know, village guidelines um. Really looks at the historical character um, and saving and preserving. You know, so, so, you know, it's kind of, they're kind of a little different, but they. Work together and um. You know, I think that um. And I'm, you know, very torn on this because the historical existing building is very important. Um, and. It's difficult to start uh. Taking it apart and keeping the integrity. And um, so. You know, if we can find that balance, um, I think that. We would be following in the spirit of both the P O C D and the Village Design Guidelines.
Thanks, thank you.
I don't know if I answered your question, but.
You, you did. Thank you, Ken.
Okay, we, we, we have to give Lynn some guidance.
Well, I think ultimately the first thing we have to decide is what to do with an overlay zone. Because everything else flows from the overlay zone. So that is the. First decision we need to make because unless we make that decision, the other two sort of. Fail. I understand the issues that uh. Mr. Nielsen had on overlay zones. This was discussed also with the Waviney. Application, remember? One by Saint Mark's. Overlay zone. My own view is that overlay zones for, this is called unique properties. Um, I can see how they make sense. Because they have peculiar characteristics of size and parking needs and height and everything else uh, that um. The, the generic uh. Zoning rules tend not to encompass preps as well as one might like. And so I understand why the overlay zone uh, might be recommended and I'm sympathetic to that. I have a few uh. Things that I would like to change, change in the overlay zone as proposed, but they're very minor and I don't see them as really causing much of a fuss. I'll be able to go over them, but I think we need to decide, do we want to leave the overlay zone? Uh, application more or less as is or making material change in it. The material change has been discussed. Is requiring that essentially old properties be left in situ. It's really what, what it boils down to. And I think we need to sort of decide that upfront. Do, do we want to do that or not? And if so, how do we wordsmith it? And the other ones would be flowing from that.
Well, uh. Okay, that, that's not what I was hearing. What I was hearing was. You, you approve the application largely as is, you potentially incorporate by condition. Um, you potentially incorporate. A review. A P and Z review of their proposal to put the facade where they offered to put the facade. And, you know, and then you figure out, okay, in that scenario, here's, here's what the overlay zone says. Here's what the special permit says. And then. The second thing we're discussing. Is, you know, what Dan has been leading is. We. We say that. The historic building has to be, the design has to be incorporated somehow into the library design, right Dan?
Correct. That's essentially a no, come back with a new.
No, no, it's, it's, no, it's, it's like, you know, we asked Pete the question and Pete said that could be wordsmithed into an overlay zone approval and a condition of the special permit.
Those might comment on the overlay zone that we would need to make changes that would incorporate.
Oh, yeah, yeah, but we're not gonna, we're not gonna deny the overlay zone. We're just gonna make changes to the overlay zone. And then Lynn then has. Two proposals in front of her, two overlay zone proposal, two sp- special per- what we've done before is, you know, when we can't reach agreement. As she comes back and. We vote.
So, so if I understand you correctly, Mr. Chairman, we would have two proposals. One is in uh. Accepting the or approving the uh, the three applications essentially, essentially as is. With a recommendation regarding uh, maintenance of some sort of um, historical aspects of the current physical old library building. With the um, commission having to approve a more definitive proposal from the library and exactly what that, what that means. So I understand one.
That, that could be one idea, yeah. Where we're sort of bundling what you were saying, what I'm saying and what Kent was saying.
Yeah, the other would be a uh, more substantive change to the overlay zone and saying that. Uh, older buildings need to be maintained. That gets wordsmithed and exactly what that means, but. That in effect would say that the library would need to maintain the nineteen thirteen or perhaps thirteen and thirty-six library in some form.
Yeah, not necessarily in situ, right Dan? But in some.
In some form, yes. Yeah, I, I, I think the, the reason I brought that up is that could be. The carrot that we dangle out there that could help to get to a compromise. We all know the P O C Ds, this are the um, uh, New Canaan Preservation Alliance's stance on that. And I can respect that. But with an application like this, I think we all can agree that there has to be compromise on both sides.
Yeah, well, that's been, you're completely correct. I mean, I think that's everybody on this commission's frustration.
I know, I know.
So, could all of the commissioners? Potentially be on board for option A or op- option B? And if the answer is yes. Then we can have Lynn get to work. But if the, you know, if somebody's not comfortable with option A nor option B. Speak now.
Well, as I, as I understand it, that both A and B. Include some preservation aspect.
Uh, John, I, I disagree. I don't think option A would. Do that at all. The John Cris option, I, I just want to clarify. I, I, to, to John Goodwin's question.
No, option A, but, but Art, sorry to interrupt. Option A would include Ms. Oldham's proposal at the end of the last meeting.
Which doesn't, which doesn't necessarily mean preservation of the old library.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, therein is the distinction that I actually draw very clearly.
Okay, yeah, yeah, okay. But that's what, you know, and again, I'm trying. Again, I'm, I'm trying to play chairman right now.
Yeah.
Where, you know, that's what we can debate at the end of June.
Okay, so. John, am I correct in that A, both A and B. Would contain some preservation aspect?
Well, beauty in the, is in the eye of the beholder, which is, I'm arguing option A would and, and I think Dan and Art are disagreeing with me. So beauty's in the eye of the beholder, Dick.
Okay, but A is not. Just a clear approval of the application as submitted.
Correct.
Close, but not quite.
Conditions.
But, but to respond to the chairman's question, for example, John, John, and again, I, should you poll the crowd to determine if in fact each of us is. Potentially, you asked, would we be comfortable with A or B? I mean, is that useful? For example, I am comfortable with both A and B.
Okay. Yeah, it's a straw poll. So. Art, you're, Art, you could get on board for A or B.
That's correct.
Okay, Claire?
Um, just for B. When we're saying. Um, maintain, which is being maintain historic structures or could they? You know, just do a facade? Are we gonna? Like state out exactly what we want in terms of preservation?
Dan?
I think we need to. I'm not exactly sure of the language at this point, but that's something we can work on with Lynn.
Okay, so just for the future, there'll probably be detailed language about. The preservation. I'm fine with either one.
Yes, because there has to be, in order for the two options to have a clear distinction in terms of. The achievable goal. We have to add more detailed language to option B. Be- because option A technically could be, well, yeah, we're gonna keep this, you know, twenty, twenty linear feet of facade and call it a day. That's not what we're, that's not what we're after.
God, thanks.
Okay, so Dan, you're, you're comfortable with A or B, B, right?
Those two being the options.
Yeah, John Criss, I think you're okay.
I'm not comfortable with A. I'm not comfortable with B. I think.
No, I'm simply trying to, A or B is the, the straw poll right now.
I can take it.
Okay, Ken?
Both.
Okay, James?
Yes.
Okay, I got Dan, I got Art. Krista?
Yes, I'm comfortable with those options.
Okay.
Okay, Lynn, questions? Or, and Pete, you as well. I mean, uh, you know, you guys are gonna be the draftees. I'm hearing Dan, he's gonna work with you on option B. But Lynn, questions?
Um, so just one big question, and I guess Pete, it is part of this question. This is all going into the overlay, right?
It's both, I think, but Pete?
Well, yeah. B certainly. A maybe not, because A incorporates the voluntary suggestion of the uh. Of the applicant. So that could be a condition of a special permit. First is a change in the overlay regulation. So, but we can. I think that between Lynn and me, we can come up with. Options. Obviously, the commission's gonna tweak them, you know, anyway, but we can come up with viable working drafts of something for the commission.
Okay, but Lynn, other questions? I mean, I, I want you. Clearly, let's use this as an opportunity and you as well, Pete. You, you know, let's make sure you all understand the objectives behind A and B. The best wordsmith.
So one question would be, there was mention of detailed language regarding preservation. Are we giving them strict rules of what they need to preserve, how they need to preserve it, where they need to preserve it, or is it um? You know, up, up to them?
So I think Dan has offered to, assuming Pete's okay with this, Dan has offered to work with you on flushing that out further.
Okay, sorry.
And, and my, my follow-up question to Pete on this is, Pete, are you familiar with any other towns that have? Had a similar application where historic preservation languages was of this type of a nature was incorporated into the approval?
Well, again, not without language in the regulation that supports it unless it's volunteered by the applicant, but. I'm aware of other regulations around that. Have historic preservation as one of the. As one of the goals. Oftentimes it's an incentive, but in this case that wouldn't apply, but uh. So, no, but I think we can, I think the, the key is that whatever language we come up with. Is specific enough. Um, so that it's not. You know, over broad or vague and leaves anything open to interpretation. I think. Whatever those standards are that are, are in that. Uh, overlay need to be specific enough um, for anybody to understand and be able to apply. So that's kind of the, I think that's sort of the, uh, the challenge is to make sure that. Whatever those are, are specific enough that everybody's comfortable with them. And obviously, they're gonna be subject to review and change by. Members of the commission. So we're, I think Lynn and I will come up with language that will. Maybe have what we think are appropriate. Standards. Um, the commission may or may not. Agree with that, but that would be the starting point to have fairly specific. Standards in the, in the overlay zone that define. What? Uh, preservation means in that context. I don't know that I'm gonna find. Regulations in other towns that are exactly. What we're dealing with here. I'm not, you know, the other towns that we represent, I can't think of a regulation or an overlay zone that does exactly what. You're doing here. So I'm not sure that. I can come up with something that I know has been. Utilized in another town, for example, but I think we can. Come up with language at war.
Okay. I'll just suggest on preservation because much of those buildings. Have disappeared. They've been torn down. Preservation either means. Keep what's left. Or rebuild in some way or merge it into a newer building similar to what the situation is now. Those would seem to be the choices available.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Those three choices of what you mean by preservation.
Yeah, well, and, and then. It'll be up to the commission to make that. Determination of what preservation means, but the, but it needs to be defined. The point is, one of those three things needs to be. Defined in the. In the regulation, in the overlay zone regulation.
The, the three are mutually exclusive.
I think so, yes. I, don't you? I mean, I think there, I think it's, it's up to the commission to decide what it wants preservation to mean, but my only point is it. It needs to be defined in a way that's. Clear.
Yes, ambiguity here is not our friend.
Right.
I completely agree with that statement. Yeah. Which is why I have a problem with option one. One is ambiguous uh, by, by purpose. Yeah, I understand. I'm just saying, that's why I'm not a fan of it.
Okay, Lynn, more questions?
Um, no, I know.
Okay.
I have a question for Lynn or maybe just. I, I just don't, I don't know what that timing is, Lynn. Like, when do we have to come to a final? The like final vote on this? I, I mean, obviously it'd be great if we did it at the end of June, but if it, if we're still working on language, like, when do we have to do that by?
Sixty, sixty-five days from the close of the public hearing. I don't know when the public hearing, what date it was closed.
Yeah, oh, last week.
Okay, so there's two months.
And they submitted under the executive order, so would allow the extra ninety days?
Well, that's a good question because the. The executive order provision. Doesn't apply now. It was submitted under that, but the public hearing was closed. Uh, was, public hearing was closed after. The executive order was, was modified, so I think, right? It was after May twentieth.
Yeah, it was uh, May twenty-fifth.
So I think, you know, this is all kind of new area, but I, I think the, the better approach. From the commission's point of view would be to assume you have sixty-five days from the close of the public hearing without an additional ninety. It, it may be that it's available, but it's just not clear. That's one of the things that the, everybody's kind of looking for the governor's office for some clarity on.
The, the last day of uh. Last Tuesday and, and July is what, the thirty-first?
Or maybe the twenty-fifth, I believe.
Well, yes, sorry, twenty-fifth. Twenty-fifth? Or twenty, twenty seconds?
Twenty-fifth is a Sunday. You're talking about July?
Sorry, the twenty-seventh.
July twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh.
So we could do it the last, our regular meeting in July.
So we could do it the last, our regular meeting in July, just get on, under the wire.
We, you know, look, I would love to do it by June twenty-ninth. I acknowledge that may be too aggressive. Um, we could always do a special meeting as well.
As Lynn and, as Lynn and I draft language, we can forward it to members of the commission. Um, you know, in advance, keeping in mind that those are public documents, just so everybody understands that. If we do a draft resolution and submit it to the commission, it's, it's a public document. Not that that's a bad thing, just, just want people to, you know, be aware of that.
Okay.
So that might be one approach.
Okay, let's, um.
And our comments back before the meeting would also be public documents? They're public documents, yeah. They're, they're not, there's no public input permitted, but people can look at them.
Okay, so you, you guys are gonna work on that. Um, Lynn, on the overlay zone, you had my changing the private park from May to Will.
The, the private, wait, say that again?
On the overlay zone, remember at the last hearing, I asked the applicant to agree to change the private park. You've got that one, right?
Yes.
Okay, um, which by the way, is supported later on in the overlay zone. Um, John, did you have overlay zone changes?
Uh, yes, I did. Um, let me find them.
And if anybody else, uh, has overlay zone changes?
It would be, it's on page seven, it's, oops, I just lost it again, hold on. Bear with me. Sorry, um, this would be under the design guidelines. Uh, C, landscape and hardscape treatments and designs. Uh, Roman numeral five. Wouldn't be me if I didn't complain about plant material. Um, hey.
I didn't say anything.
Okay, anyway. You read it, says plant material that is hardy, non-invasive and native, or adapted species typically found in New England. This is a big hole you could drive a truck through. Adapted species typically found in New England is basically anything.
What do you want to do, John?
What I would recommend is plant material that is hardy, non-invasive, and locally native, comma, and tolerant to drought, blah, blah, blah. We drop the adapted species.
Is everybody comfortable with that? Okay.
Is, um, let me find out, under G, let me find, find that. Uh, where is it? Uh, parking, I would recommend that we include a provision that says that, um, any, uh, you know, library within this zone that has onsite parking must have at least, what, twenty percent of such, uh, spaces uh, providing an electric vehicle charging station.
How many percent?
Twenty. They only have, what, two or three spaces? That means you have one.
Okay, so you want a, an EV charger on the, on the applicant's premises?
Yes, and they have what, two? Uh, is it, for memory serves, two handicap spots you decided to put in in the back? So in effect, if I pick twenty percent as a number, you have to have at least one, because you can't have a partial. And in effect, you're requiring them to have a EV charging station. I think having that in our regulations generally is, uh, a good thing, and since this is a new build and would be a, uh, actual change in our zoning regulations, it's a good place to start.
Okay, anybody, okay, anybody have an issue with that? Okay, anything else, John?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay, anybody else on the overlay zone regs? I mean, obviously, not talking about what we've been talking about for the past two hours. These guys are gonna work on it, but anything else?
Ju- just to be clear, Mr. Chris, are, are you saying twenty percent of their total parking number?
No, onsite. Just their campus. It doesn't include the.
Oh, onsite of their.
Yeah, not center school.
Doesn't include center school because it's not their property.
Oh, gotcha, yeah, yeah.
On site, so they have, what, I think, two or three handicap spots, so one of them has to be
Yeah.
The charging station. That's, that's what it boils down to.
Yeah.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, uh, Lynn's, or everybody, special permit conditions, um, at my end. Um, Lynn, the traffic circulation, parking, we're, we're going to have all of that in. Right, having having to do with, um, Mr. Galant's recommendations, right?
Into the, you want it, or you want it as a condition of special permit approval?
Condition of the special permit.
Okay, just wanted to make sure I'm talking.
Which is what Mr. Smith agreed to, when I asked him that.
Okay.
And then, the question I had related to that is the one-year review, which right now is in the MOU, but I'm thinking we should have that in our special permit as well. Were you thinking that way, Lynn?
I, I was, actually.
Okay. And I thought what you could do, if, if, maybe you've already drafted it, but what you could do is I reread the MOU, and I thought one point oh seven FGHIJKL, you could probably just lift it all out of there, since it's already been negotiated. Everybody good with that? Um, and then, um, the, uh, Ms. Copeland's engineering will be in there, right?
Yes, definitely.
Okay. Um, and again, X of everything that's gonna be worked on, vis a vis special permit conditions, any, any other special permit conditions, X of any, but did anybody else have anything? We good? Okay.
So, just to, just to ask a question for clarification. So, as you guys were discussing this, there's two potential um, regulation amendments, the overlay zone, that would, you guys would be looking at. You guys are not proposing any changes to the map change. You'd map it in the location where they're proposing it, and then you're envisioning one special permit, um, draft resolution uh, with conditions. So there's, essentially, you're looking to see three resolutions next month. Is that, am I, am I hearing you correctly?
No, I'm not sure what you mean. We, we've got, we have two potential approvals. And each approval will have different language to the overlay zone, and I would think potentially has different language in the special permits.
So for, okay, so for.
Four? Sorry?
So four different special permits. I mean, sorry, sorry, four different resolution. One for option A, would be an overlay zone, and then a a special permit approval as well, and then option D would have a similar change to the overlay zone with its own special permit approval.
Yeah.
But I'm not sure how you're getting to four resolutions.
Sorry?
Two, two for each.
We're only gonna approve one of two things.
Mr. Chairman, as I understand it, the, um, so the, uh, option A, the, uh, overlay zone would be approved as, more or less as is with some of the changes we just discussed, which are, you know, fairly minor in nature. The, um, uh, the second one, the, uh, where that overlay zone is, is gonna be where it is. There doesn't seem to be much discussion regarding that, or disagreement. The, um, special permit would include the language that you suggested. That would be in the special.
On, you mean, on, still on, we're still on option A?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm gonna leave it up to Pete and Lynn to figure out where to put my suggestion.
Okay, no, fair enough.
No, John, that's a pretty open, uh, that's a pretty suggestive, um, response there. You want us to tell us where to put it? That's, just kidding.
I just figured it out.
Yeah, I know, I know, I, I, I could tell.
Pete, I already had to admit earlier that English is my third language, and now I have to admit that, um, um, my wits are not about me, are they? Okay, every, every, everybody good? Okay, super. Um, so let's move on to Grace. As you know, I'm recused. I am going to mute and take myself off video.
Okay, this is Dick Ward. I will, at the request of the chairman, assume the position of chairman for this purpose. Uh, I think you all now have a, uh, the draft that was prepared by, uh, Lynn. I think, uh, several of us have made some initial comments to it, some just sort of minor, I think for the most part, clarifications, and Lynn did come out with a clean copy, uh, today. I don't know if you've had a chance to look at it, but it's, it's essentially the same as what Lynn, uh, sent to us a, a few days, a couple of days ago. Uh, last meeting, we did have a full discussion on it, and we, uh, suggested an approach on the applicant's application, and that's what Lynn, she sort of, uh, tried to incorporate our thoughts, and I think did a pretty good job on doing that. So we have a document now in front of us, which, uh, I think we can view as the, uh, motion with respect to the applicant's application. Before we get to that, let me just be clear as to who is, I think everyone is seated except
Chris is seated for me. And, and I'll put my, I'll put myself on mute.
Okay. Uh, for Peter's benefit, uh, Peter, as you know, we have had many nights in dealing with special permits for Grace Farms. Uh, with extensive hearings over the years. I mean, this now goes back, uh, quite a ways. In, uh, twenty seventeen, we came up with a special permit that had, uh, I think it was like a hundred conditions. They have been adjusted once or twice, and now the, uh, Grace Farms has asked for further modifications to those conditions. Uh, the modifications requested basically fall into three categories. One has to do with the eighty-two, uh, Pudding Hills house. They wanna use that now and for a, a, in a broader scope. They wanna move their religious staff to work out of that house. It would no longer be simply a residence. It would become an office space. And they wanted to add, uh, parking spaces to it. At our last meeting, we, uh, reviewed that, and we tended to lean on and go back to the original findings that I think go back to like, uh, twenty oh seven, which were restated in twenty seventeen, that parking spaces for two hundred and twenty-six vehicles was the max that we would uh, approve for the site. So, since they wanna move, uh, people up to this, uh, Pudding Hill house, they'll probably need, they may want to have more parking spaces, but we're ba- basically telling them, look, uh, you can adjust your parking spaces within your premises as you see fit, but the maximum for the total premises, which is now one premise, uh, is two twenty-six. So if you make more at Pudding Hill, you're gonna have to eliminate some parking spaces elsewhere. So that, that was, uh, one of the issues. Another issue was the, they wanted to uh, be able to have some for-profit enterprises undertake activity at the site. From day one, I think we have always said that, uh, they could not seek uh, revenue ha- enhancing or activity enhancing, uh, activities for profit, or by for-profit organizations. That they can allow use of the premises under certain circumstances by nonprofit. And we want to maintain that. That's been a finding that has been in place for quite some time. The third, which, uh, i- is perhaps easier for us to deal with, was the, uh, whole reporting mechanism that was created. I, it became laborious for, for Lynn and the staff, uh, the P and Z staff. Uh, so there have been recommendations to make it rather than monthly, to make it quarterly. I, I think that we felt that the essence of the reason for the reporting would be maintained. We would still have the visibility into what they were planning to do and what they had done. Now, part of our effort, I think as P and Z commissioners, is always to not only apply the zoning regulations, which we certainly intend to do and will do, but we, we try to protect neighbors uh, wherever possible. And, and I think that we have to, you know, look at that, and, and we, we do have to pay attention to the neighbors. The other side of that coin is the ins, the uh, institution, the Grace Farms. I, for one, for years, have always worried about institutional creep, because once you have an institution that's in a residential uh, zone, which this is, institutions, it's sort of, it's sort of their nature to expand, to improve, to add, to creep. Well, I think we have to be careful and, and restrict that, and that's why we are looking at the original findings and maintaining some of those original findings, which we felt were important at the time, and that've been effective. So we're not looking for allowing creep, and we're, we're trying to, I feel, uh, protect in a reasonable way the neighbors. Neighbors may not accept that, that we're being reasonable, and Grace Farms may not accept, but that's our job to come up with what we think is a fair solution. And I think that the, uh, resolutions that, uh, we now have before us do that. If there's no other, I mean, if nobody has any problem with the resolutions that we're looking at, I think I, I'm prepared to, uh, call to question and take a vote.
I have a couple suggestions. John, Chris, um, these are more, uh, of a technical nature. If you look at finding number eight, says Grace Farms Foundation requested that the existing special permit grated, like grating cheese, I think in somewhere, so it's granted as opposed to grated. Uh, also on, uh,
Granted, John, my copy says grant.
Okay. I get the other one. Um, do we also change the, uh, date from December fifteen to January? Under twenty? Very end.
This is the, the findings?
Yeah, twenty reports, and send the reports.
And Lynn, do you, can you answer that?
Wait, where, I'm sorry, John, where are you?
Under reasons, reasons for approval, then conditions.
Page six.
No, it's page number.
Oh, sorry, okay, I'm on the wrong page, that's fine. Oh, sorry, okay, I'm on the wrong page, that's fine. Page four.
Was that changed from December 15th to January 15th?
Where? Condition number four?
Reports are due quarterly.
We.
I don't see what you're saying there.
Yeah, I'm, I'm. What, what?
Condition four.
This is the last one I got. Said, sent it 17, 1109. Today.
Yep, that's the last one.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I opened it up. That's, okay, guy got the right one. If I go to, um. It's after findings. And then there's reasons for approval. There are. Points there.
Yeah.
Uh, condition number four, John. With the latest version. It has dated February 10, 2021.
This is the one that was sent at that date.
Today, sent out today by Lynn.
Okay, looking at, at the top, it says hearing discussion state. Decision, is it at the bottom or the top?
Well, it's condition number four, the last sentence, or the last line.
John, are you viewing it in Word and viewing it with, um, edit views available? Because. It may be a, a function of. The word.
Views, yeah, I'm just using in Word, it didn't say edit views. I'm doing it on an iPad.
Oh, well, it.
Maybe you're right on that.
Yeah, I think it, it may be related to the way you're viewing it. Um, with regard to the, the edits that Lynn made because they are available. You know, in a full functioning Word.
Okay, that may be it. I thought it would be in here, sort of a fully change as opposed to mark to show changes. In effect, okay. Got it. There are minor things, so, uh, the substance of it, I'm fine with. I think it fully reflects what I recall this commission discussing, so. I'm okay with moving forward.
Okay, well then, called to question, uh, Richard Ward.
Before you, wait, before, yeah. Um, the one thing I just want to make clear because I omitted it by accident, but it, um. I'm, I'm gonna add a line that just says, um. Where after all the whereas is, that says resolve, the commission is approving this, uh. This application. Subject to the following conditions. So just, just wanted to add that.
Okay.
That's the one thing that's actually missing. After all the whereas is, there's no actual. Formal resolution. It gives you the reasons to approve and all the conditions. Um, but just wanted to be clear that you, you're all okay with that.
No, good point, yeah, that, no, that's just appropriate language to have, yes.
Um, Mr. Ward, I, I did have one clarification that I just, having read the. Having read the. Draft this afternoon, I noticed that. We, when we first initially reviewed the permit, we had the construct that there were three principal uses for the property. One being religious. Uh, in addition to the foundation being a secondary. And. I think one. Conversation we'd had is that, you know, I think from. I think, I'm just not sure if we're explicitly saying it, but having the church move from. You know, the barns to the, the residence. Um, keeps consistent the idea of the property being used for religious, um, activities. So I thought, uh, you know. Because I think one, one, at one point we had made the notion of, well, you know, if you're, if you're moving this outside of the main construct of the new development, does that mean the church? And the usage of the church. To your point about scope creep or, um, institutional creep, does this mean the church is being removed from the construct of the foundation? Um, but it seems that. You know, it's not based on, based on this move. So I, maybe it's implicit, I just noticed that.
Well, I, I think as I understand it. What they're, they're not removing all of the religious activities. Because the services, the weekly services are held. In the, what I guess called auditorium.
Oh, the sanctuary, yeah, yep.
Sanctuary. They're just moving sort of the staff. The religious staff up to Pudding Hill. So. The overall site would continue to have. Contain religious institution. Along with the philanthropic and club. Activities.
I think they use the barns for religious education too. And various other places on site. Uh, and so they're using various structures for religious purposes.
Okay, well, that, that, that sounds good. Yeah, I, I think that. I think that Lynn's edits make a lot of sense, especially around. The construct of the parking and having that, the high watermark of 226 being.
Yeah.
Repeated a few places, so.
Okay, let me, uh, call to question, uh. Richard Ward votes yes. John, Chris?
Um, Dick, Dick, this is Karen. Um, are you just voting on calling the question or are you actually voting on the resolution?
On the resolution.
On the resolution. You haven't made a motion.
We have a motion in a second.
Or a second.
We need a motion in a second before we can vote.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I move that we approve the resolution.
I will second.
Do.
We need. Do we need to have explanation and justifications for the motion? In addition to what is already stated. In the resolutions that we are. Seeking to vote on.
No, because, that's why the reasons are there. The, a court wants to see a collective. Reason for the vote and that those reasons are set forth. In the resolution. So when the, when a member votes yes, they're adopting those reasons, um, as the collective. Reason of the commission, reasons of the commission.
Okay, so. We can proceed with the vote, yes. Okay. Richard Ward, yes. John Cris?
Yes.
Daniel Radman?
Yes.
Clarence Cornea?
Yes.
Kent Turner?
Yes.
Krista Nielsen?
Yes.
Art Casavant?
Yes.
Chris Herring?
Yes.
Now, James, are you on?
No.
No, okay, all right. Unanimous vote. I now turn the meeting back over to the chairman.
He went to bed.
Yeah, he went to bed, I guess.
Lynn, we, uh, we all said no admin actions, right?
We are all set. There's no admin actions and, um. Thank you guys for, uh, for, for redoing Grace and, um. When, when you're ready, you can adjourn.
Uh, well, let's adjourn. Pete, thank you for, uh, for all your time tonight. Everybody stay safe and take care. Have a good night, guys.
Everybody.